Mayor Glenn Grant. Councillors Claude McIntosh.
Here.
Sid Gardner.
Present.
Caroline E. Bayers.
Is out.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Councillors Todd Bennett.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
And Eric Bergeron.
Present.
So we are waiting, Mr. Mayor, for Councillors Carr, Hollingsworth, and Dupell to join us.
Okay, well, we can, as I say, we can go through the preliminary part. We know that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Awasasne. Motion to adopt the agenda. Councillor Towndale, Councillor Bennett, all in favor? Oh, it's carried. Thank you. Any disclosures of interest for this evening's meeting? Councillor Ebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this will be the same for all of the meetings. I'm not so sure what the schedule is for presentations, but any time the Ontario Works budget comes up, I will step away from the conversation as the agency I work for is funded by that department.
All right. Thank you for that. And the others? Will be on, could have a motion to win the committee of the whole. Councillor Gardner, Councillor Bennett, all in favor? Oh, it's carried. Thank you.
And I'm clear.
So on the agenda today is the 2022 general taxation budget. I think we want to begin with some presentations before entertaining motions, so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Bailey.
I am through, Mr. Mayor. I'll just share my screen.
Tracy, just before we get started, would you prefer questions as we go along or wait till the end?
I think we should have questions as we go along, unless it's a topic that we'll discuss further along in the presentation, then maybe I'll ask the councillor to wait until that that slide comes up.
Okay, thank you. Everybody feeling good about that? All right. Hey, Trace.
Perfect. Through you, Mr. Mayor. As noted by the city clerk at last evening's council meeting, currently we have scheduled for meetings with council to review the 2022 budget submission. That's today, tomorrow, Monday, July the 30th, sorry, January 31st, and Tuesday, February 1st. We have planned to begin each meeting at 3 o'clock and end by 8:00 p.m. with a half hour break for dinner. Budget meeting review will include the 2022 budget overview presentation followed by departmental presentations. Managers will present their operating budgets compared to the 2021 budget and their 2022 capital projects. Included in the 2022 budget book is an executive summary, followed by departmental operating and capital budgets, and additional information in appendices A through D, and a copy of the 2022 budget presentation as appendix E. The 2022 budget submission will be reviewed in the order of the book. Each year, city departmental staff work collaboratively with the financial services department to prepare the annual budget for council's review. The budget book provided to you is a combination of their efforts. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff from all city departments for their support that they've given financial services in preparing this year's budget. The presentation includes an overview of council's strategic priorities, budget highlights, an operating budget overview, changes to the city's staffing complement, capital budget overview, long-term financial planning, asset management, long-term borrowing and debt repayments, reserve and reserve funds, property assessment and taxes, the city's community partners, a visual representation of proposed tax dollars at work, and followed by any questions that council may have. On September 9th, 2019, council approved its strategic plan for 2019 through 2022. The strategic plan is an important document that outlines council's priorities, providing a vision and direction for Cornwall's future. The development of the city's budget is based on council's strategic plan and several supporting plans and documents, including the city's asset management plan, long-term financial plan, the financial condition assessment review, our development charges, background study, and several departmental master plans. The 2022 budget was developed to encourage progress towards the city's long-term financial goal of sustainability and provides for the numerous programs and services delivered to the community. Both the operating and capital budgets have been prepared by city departmental staff and reviewed by the CAO and the senior team. This slide provides budget highlights. The city's 2022 operating budget is $195.5 million. Operating budgets funded from the tax base for city departments have increased by 2.6 million or 3.37%. Increases to both long-term debt at $931,000 and insurance at $243,000 have had an impact on the operating budget for 2022. Excluding increases for both, the operating budget would have increased by 1.4 million or 1.83%. Also included in the budget is $298,000 for growth. That's new assessment from 2021 supplementary taxation that has been added to the 2021 tax rule and $2,130,000 of supplementary taxation. That's projected growth added to the tax rule during 2022. The 2022 capital budget is $20.8 million. Net capital budgets for city departments funded from the tax base have increased from just over 1.4 million to just under 1.7 million, an increase of $216,230 or 14.85%. The budget has been prepared with a levy, a tax levy of $80,369,977. This represents a tax levy increase of $2,781,753 or 3.59%. The 2020 budget has been prepared as a normal budget year with no reductions to revenues or increases in expenditures due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff monitored the impacts of the pandemic and the recovery plan while preparing the 2022 budget, similar to 2020 and 21. Staff will continue to monitor and report any significant variances to council. The 2022 operating budget provides resources for the day-to-day costs of delivering municipal services to residents. The following slides will provide further detail. In summary, total revenue, the first row highlighted in blue, has increased by 14.3 million or 14.13% when compared to the 2021 budget. The second highlighted row shows that total expenditures are up by 16.4 million. And maybe I'll just use my cursor so everybody can see. Or 9.69% when compared to the 2021 budget, including community partners and contributions to and from reserves. The city's net operating budget is $78.6 million or 78.7 million. The city's net operating budget increased by 2.6 million or 3.37% when compared to 2021. As noted, excluding the increases for both debt charges and insurance costs, the increase to the operating budget increased by 1.4 million or 1.83%. Budgeting for revenue is generally more challenging than budgeting expenditures as most revenues are tied to external factors. The city budgets revenue on a three-year average and/or trends. Starting in 2022, the city's budget now includes Cornwall Area Housing Corporation as a department of the city. In previous years, the city transferred Cornwall Area Housing, the funding required through an expense in financial transfers. Overall, revenue for the city is increasing by 14.3 million or 14.13% when compared to 2021's budget. As noted, under user fees and other right here, the approximately 7 million of this increase in revenue is related to rental fees for Cornwall Area Housing Corporation. The remaining change to revenue is an increase of 1.5 million in payments in lieu and supplementary taxation, which is 1.3 million in taxation and 298,000 for prior year growth. Provincial and federal grants makes up approximately 34% of the city's operating revenue. The increase of 2.7 million in provincial, federal grants includes additional funding for Glenstirdan Lodge at $1.4 million and paramedic services at 1.1 million. The city will see its OMPF grant increase by $145,000 to $4,666,100. The increase of 1.1 million in revenue from other municipalities is related to changes in shared services, social and housing services, including Cornwall Area Housing Corporation, Glenstirdan Lodge, and paramedic services, and will be further described when departmental managers present their budgets. The user fees other category represents approximately 15% of the city's operating revenue. In 2022, user fees increased by 8.6 million, including the 7 million in rental unit fees for Cornwall Area Housing. The remaining variance is fees related to transit, parking, tipping fees, childcare, building permits, et cetera. Increases to fees and new fees included in the 2022 budget can be found on page eight of the executive summary. These fees have been included in the budget submission. The clerk will bring the services subjected to fees and charges by law to council following the approval of the budget. This category also includes the repayment of the small business loans in the amount of $384,800 provided to businesses in 2020 for relief of the pandemic. This revenue will be contributed back to the Brownfields Reserve. The city has also budgeted $200,000 to recover a deposit amount paid to its benefit provider. Internal revenue includes transfers between divisions or departments, including city equipment rental, an increase of $84,000 and recoveries for WSIB at an increase of 155K. The change, internal recoveries when compared to 2021 budget is 350,000 or 5.59%. Operating expenditures are costs associated with delivering the services, including staffing, fuel, utilities, and contracted services. The operating budget also includes long-term debt charges, insurance, and financial transfers. Overall, the operating expenditures increased by $17 million or 9.54% when compared to 2021. As noted, like revenue, the city is budgeting Cornwall Area Housing as a department of the city and not as a transfer payment. So I'd like to move to the next slide that provides a better analysis of our operating expenditures with social services separated. So this is what we had seen on the first slide. And here are the changes. When we look at the city compared, the 2022 submission compared to the 2021 budget for the rest of the city. I'm going to take a drink of water. So the right side of the of the slide notes the dollar and the percentage change by category. Salaries and benefits increased by $5.6 million or 6.71%. In 2022, the city will see an increase in its employee benefit rates. The city's renewal cost increased by approximately $966,000 or 21% across the corporation. We will be discussing changes in staffing on our next slide. Purchase of goods increased by $225,000 or 2.12%. Purchase of goods includes the purchase of items such as traffic and building materials, chemical supplies, medical supplies, fuel, computer hardware, parts and equipment utilities. For the most part, the increase stems from an increase in fuel. The budget for fuel increased by 138,000 when compared to 2021's budget. In 2021, the city budgeted fuel at a dollar a liter. The 2022 budget includes an increase of 10% per liter for fuel to a dollar 10 a liter. The city has been averaging approximately a dollar four to a dollar 19 per liter over the last several months. The city consumes approximately 720,000 liters of gasoline and 735,000 liters of diesel per year. The budget includes an increase of 1.2 million or 3.84% in services and rents. Services and rents includes contracted services, maintenance agreements, advertising costs, transfers related to social and housing services, costs associated with arbitrations, negotiations, and internal city vehicle equipment rentals. The increase is made up of several contributing variances. The new workforce program in children's services at 792,000, which is 100% funded by the province, increases in the annual maintenance for software and new software implementations of approximately 310,000, increases in training costs in Ontario Works and paramedic services and computer leasing agreements. As noted, long-term debt charges are estimated to increase by just over 931,000 or 17.19% excluding Cornwall Area Housing Corporation. In 2022, when compared to the 2021 budget, long-term debt will be discussed a little later in the presentation. The city will see an increase of $243,000 or 22 point, I'm sorry, 20.52% in insurance premiums. This increase is the continued correction in the insurance market. Financial has increased by 509,000 or 1.23%. Financial includes expenditures such as transfers made by social and housing services, transfers for the city's CIP programs, and to community partners. Tax refunds are also budgeted under financial. The city has budgeted $1 million for tax refunds in 2022, the same amount it budgeted in 2021. The increase of $509,000 related to an increase in WSIB costs at 155,000 and an increase in funding for Alstair Theatre at 150,000 and transfers to reserves. When vacancies and retirements occur, when contract renewals come due, or when operational efficiencies or capacity matters presents itself, administration revisits the city's staffing complement. This slide outlines staffing changes made during 2021 and included in the 2022 budget. It can be summarized as follows. Net to the corporation is an increase of 24.3 FTEs or full-time equivalents, 11,991 part-time hours, one contract, two students, and 283 part-time election hours. For the most part, changes are related to staffing requirements for the Glenstirdan Lodge and paramedic services. Glenstirdan Lodge is increasing its full-time complement by 12 staff and its part-time hours by 5,347. The hiring of RNs, RPNs, and PSWs aligns with the province's commitment to provide an average of four hours of daily direct care per resident each day by March 31st, 2025. The province is providing 1.1 million to Glenstirdan Lodge to support this initiative. Mr. Golden will provide further detail when he reviews his 2022 budget with council. Paramedic Services has budgeted an increase in its full-time complement by a net of 13.6 employees, 14 to the service, less 0.4 to fire services for the relocation of emergency management. Part-time hours increased by 7,344 for paramedic services. The 2022 budget's submission reflects an increase in frontline staffing for paramedics, logistics, and the community paramedicine program. Additional staffing is needed to address a consistent increase in call volume, call duration, complexity, and new programming. The increase in paramedic, community, paramedicine program is funded 100% by the province. Chief Lister will provide greater detail when he reviews his 2022 budget with council. Also included in the budget is a disability and wellness coordinator in human resources, an ITT infrastructure and security analyst position in financial services, a maintenance employee in housing services, an arts and culture coordinator in recreation services, a sustainability project coordinator budgeted at one-third in wastewater and wastewater budgets, and half of an FTE in bylaw services. There is one contract position add to the budget in bylaw services and the parking program to support enforcement of municipal bylaws. That position is funded by COVID funding. The capital budget funds the purchase and construction and rehabilitation of assets. The 2022 capital budget includes 20 20.8 million in capital works and asset replacements, including 10.3 million in roads and transportation, a 3.6 million investment in transit projects, 1.3 million for vehicles and equipment for paramedic services, 2.1 million for city facilities and park repairs and upgrades, and 1 million for housing services formerly Cornwall Area Housing Corporation. Noted in the comparison chart on the left, our gross capital costs decreased by 17.3 million dollars when compared to 2021's budget. Year-to-year capital requirements can change dramatically depending on our capital needs. The decrease in gross capital cost is attributed to the municipal works yard redevelopment capital project that was budgeted in 2021 at 15.1 million dollars. Capital projects can receive funding from a single source or through multiple funding sources. Funding to support the 2022 capital plan would come from long-term debt reserves, SDG, federal gas, government funding, including ISIP, that is investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, OSIF, our Ontario Community Infrastructure Plan, and the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care provides funding for projects at the Glenstirdan Lodge. The net balance of 1.7 million would be funded by the tax base. The amount funded from the tax base is an increase of $216,230 or 14.85% when compared to the 2021 budget. As noted, capital requirements can and do change dramatically year-to-year. It is therefore necessary for the city to have alternate funding sources such as development charges, reserves, and long-term borrowing if appropriate, that it can utilize so that capital does not put pressure on the city's tax base. As noted, the 2022 capital budget includes 20.8 million in capital works and asset replacement. So this is our column right here. The 2022 budget includes four sources of funding for capital projects as illustrated by the pie chart on the left side of the slide, including government funding at 59%, reserves at 21%, debt financing at 12%, and 8% of the funding from property taxes. The chart on the right provides a summary of the 2022 capital submission compared to the 2021 budget by department and the source of funding to support the 2022 capital projects. You'll note that there are no capital projects in the 2022 budget related to growth, and therefore there is no funding that has been included from the city's department development charges reserve. Following this presentation and over the next few budget meetings, managers will present to council the capital projects included in the 2022 budget for the respective departments. In 2017, council adopted a long-term financial plan for the city. The long-term financial plan is an important part of our budgeting framework. The long-term financial plan is one tool that council uses to identify the impact of current and future decisions when setting priorities for the city. The model forecasts the city's operating and capital revenues and expenditures and addresses in detail issues related to asset management, our target reserves or reserve balances, our debt management and property taxes as it relates to current levels of service and future growth. I'm just going to walk through a few numbers on this chart. Highlighted in blue, the fourth line down, the total levy for 2021 budget, it was $77.6 million. The three columns in the middle are forecasts for 2022, 23, and 2024. It was presented to council during the 2021 budget presentation. This forecasted for our total levy requirement at 80.4 million, 83.8 million, and 87.7 million for these years, respectively, and presented tax levy increases of 4.65%, 4.31% and 4.55%. Presented in the column titled Submission 2022, outlined in the box, shows that the total levy for 2022 presented to council is just under 80.4 million. This is a decrease from our forecasted plan in 2021 of $12,690, so very close to to what our plan was. The three columns to the right is our reforecast for the next three years for 2023, 24, and 25. The reforecasted amounts attempts to realign our projection to our long-term financial plan. The first column that we see here, the last column basically, is a reforecast that shows that by 2025, we are about $60,000 below the estimated levy requirement to support the priorities that that have been set for, by council, for municipal initiatives and programs for both operating and capital. The long-term financial plan is updated every five years. So in the 2022 budget, financial services has included $55,000 to update the city's long-term financial plan. Asset management is municipalities' plan of how to manage municipal infrastructure. Asset management is municipalities' plan uh, of how to manage municipal infrastructure, our capital assets. In order to provide uh, services to residents and other users in a way that meets their expectations. And is financially sustainable into the future. In two thousand and sixteen, the city adopted its asset management plan for the city. As noted in uh, the chart on uh, on the left. Uh, the city's assets supported by the tax base are estimated at six hundred and forty eight million dollars. That is in two thousand and sixteen replacement dollars and includes. Uh, sixty seven buildings, two hundred and seventy two kilometers of roads, twelve bridges, hundred and one culverts. Sixty eight traffic lights, five thousand one hundred and twenty seven streetlights, forty five kilometers of bike lanes. A hundred and eighty nine kilometers of sidewalks, forty parks and playgrounds. Thirty six kilometers of recreation pass and more than uh, two hundred service support and emergency response vehicles. In two thousand and seventeen, the province passed legislation through Ontario Regulation five eighty eight seventeen asset management planning for municipalities. The goal of the regulation is to help improve the way municipalities plan for their infrastructure based on current and future. Uh, services or service levels the municipality sets for itself. In accordance with the regulation, a strategic asset management policy was approved by council in July, twenty nineteen. This was the first step in a series of actions required under O Reg five eighty eight seventeen. Phase two uh, due July uh, first, two thousand and twenty two is to complete an asset management plan for core assets. This includes water, wastewater and s- stormwater assets, roads, bridges and culverts. Staff are currently working with a consultant G M uh, blue pa- plan to complete the asset management plan. And that asset management plan will be presented to council in the spring. Phase three uh, by uh, July first, two thousand and twenty four. It builds on phase two. And it, though it, it will include all assets, all city assets. Phase four due by uh, July first, two thousand and twenty five. Builds on phase three where the plan shift from current levels of ser- service. To focus on per uh, proposed levels of service and related life cycle management and financial strategies for all assets. Including consultation with the public. Also in two thousand and twenty five municipalities are to update their uh, asset management policy. At that time, it would be five years old. Uh, this slide provides two tables outlining the city's existing debt obligations for two thousand and twenty one. And the debts, uh, the city's debt capacity. In two thousand and twenty one, the city's existing uh, debt obligation of fifty million forty five, sorry, fifty million. Fifty point four five million required payments of six point seven million in principal and interest. The city's own source revenue is a hundred and twenty six point nine million with annual debt payments of six point seven million. The city is at five point three percent of its current uh, debt limit. So that's our first chart here where it shows that. The city is at, if it has six point seven million in annual repayments. Uh, and our own source revenue is a hundred or almost a hundred and twenty seven million. Uh, we are at of our ten percent, five point three. Ontario Regulation of four zero three oh two permits a maximum of twenty five percent of own source revenue to be used to fund principal and interest charges for debt. Though in order for uh, debt to remain affordable and sustainable. The city is following a policy recommendation in the long term financial plan that sets a maximum annual repayment limit of ten percent. Of net own source revenues. Based on the two thousand and twenty one municipal uh, debt limit of twelve point nine million. And thirty one point one million provincial debt limit. The city has utilized fifty three point one percent or twenty one point two percent of its debt limit respectively. The two thousand and twenty one annual repayment uh, limit based on the city's two thousand and nineteen uh, financial information return. Allows the city to borrow an additional three hundred and ten million dollars. To a total of three hundred and fifty one point two. This would equate to uh, twenty four point nine million. In additional dollars of annual principal and interest charges to a total of thirty one point one. The city's self imposed uh, debt limit of ten percent. Uh, would enable the city to borrow seventy seven point five million additional funds to a total of one hundred and eighteen point seven million. This would equate to uh, six point seven million additional dollars in annual principal and interest charges to a total of twelve point nine million. This slide compares the forecasted principal and interest payments to uh, debt repayment limits established by the province and the city. For the years two thousand and twenty two through two thousand and thirty one. The purple line, uh, it represents the province's. Uh, debt ceiling for the city at twenty five percent of own source revenue, which is estimated at thirty two point four million. In two thousand and twenty two and indexed at two percent per year to two thousand and thirty one. The yellow line represents uh, the or presents the city's debt ceiling at ten percent. Of own source revenue, which is estimated at twelve point nine million in two thousand and twenty two and indexed at two percent per year to two thousand and thirty one. In addition to the existing debt of fifty point four five million. Approval has been granted to issue debt for prior year capital projects in the amount of fifty nine million dollars. The unissued approved debt will be included in future debt issuances as expenditures are incurred. And projects are completed. Though the city remains within its annual debt limit and financial obligation. Uh, limit, the city will be financing a few major projects over the next several years. This includes the municipal works yard, fire station, art center, the reconstruction of Marlow Avenue, Brookdale Avenue and Pitt Street. Based on the ten year capital plan to two thousand and thirty one, the city plans to finance ninety two point, sorry, ninety five point two million. In capital works and asset replacement. Though these projects are included in the chart to be financed, the city hopes to secure senior levels of funding. The bars in the chart illustrate by fund, taxation is in green, wastewater in orange. And water in blue, the annual debt repayments as the city borrows and pays down debt. You will note that the city will slightly surpass the ten percent debt repayment ceiling ceiling in two thousand and twenty seven. By about seventy five thousand dollars based on our our current borrowing plan. That's right here. In two thousand and twenty two uh, budget, the city is planning to fund uh, two point four six million of capital projects through debt. This includes transit capital at eight hundred and thirty one thousand dollars uh, to fund transit buses and in addition to the transit garage. Capital for uh, transit qualifies for funding under I C I P. The amount the city plans to borrow represents the city's share at twenty six point six seven percent. The city uh, also plans to borrow. Some funds to support Le May Street upgrade. I think it's one point three, I'm sorry, one point six or one point three million. Uh, in um, phase four capital project, this project is budgeted at uh, four point five million. The balance of the project will be funded by a federal gas tax funding. It's a recommendation of the long term financial plan. Uh, that debt financing be used uh, for those projects that involve significant capital dollars greater than two point. Five million and have a life cycle of greater than twenty years. More specifically, debt financing should only be used for new or non-recurring. Infrastructure requirements and facilities. Uh, one of the financial policy recommendations from the long term financial plan. Is that over a ten year period, the city would shift capital funding from debt financing to reserve funding based on life cycle costing. The city's goal uh, would be a financial state where debt financing. Uh, is the last resort for one time capital projects. Uh, through its capital levy, the city is contributing uh, just over seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the road infrastructure. Reserve and continues to make contributions to reserves for facilities, equipment and vehicle to support this principle. In our long term financial plan. To meet the requirements of Regulation four oh three oh two under the Municipal Act. A report outlining the city's debt and debt limits are reported to council annually. The report is presented to council at the same time as its financial statements. This slide illustrates uh, annual principal and interest payments for two thousand and twenty two and their respective funding sources. Uh, the city's long term uh, debt at January first, two thousand and twenty two is a fifty. Uh, point four or fifty point five million dollars. The city plans to borrow fifteen point five million during two thousand and twenty two. Based on the current debt, new debt and the debt retire- and the retirement of debt. The two thousand and twenty two budget includes payments of that we've estimated at uh, for, sorry, nine point four million. This includes seven point eight million in principal and one point six million of interest. The nine point four million in principal and interest payments is funded through various sources. These are noted at the. Uh, right side of the screen. So we have four point three million. Uh, funded from the tax base as described in the list provided on the slide. Just over uh, eight hundred and twenty seven thousand of principal and interest payments for transit services. This is funded by both a provincial gas tax and the tax base. The Ministry of Health will uh, not fund capital for paramedic services. Uh, the facility is owned by the city and leased to paramedic services, both the leased and amortization of interest for ambulances purchased. By long term borrowing are funded at fifty percent Ministry of Health, thirty percent county and twenty percent city uh, from the uh, tax base. Principal and interest uh, payments of almost seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, for the Benson Center are supported by the Progress Fund. In the amount of two hundred and ninety one thousand six hundred with the balance of four hundred and twenty seven, seven eighty four, supported by the tax base. The city borrowed for both the library and the justice building HVAC uh, units, principal and interests funded. Are funded from the uh, the building reserve. And as outlined in the water and wastewater budget presentation, wastewater capital projects are funded by wastewater building billings and water capital. Projects are funded by water billings. Approximately fifty four point eight percent of the city's annual debt is funded from the city's. The city's tax base. As described, uh, this slide illustrates the annual repayment limits for the city as pers- as prescribed under Ontario Regulation four oh three oh two. Effective January first, two thousand and twenty one, the annual repayment for principal and interest. Is thirty one point one million, representing an additional capacity to borrow three hundred and ten million. If the city borrows at five percent for a term of twenty years. The limit decreases if the term is shorter than than twenty years. The limit would increase if the city borrows at lower interest rates than five percent. Over the past couple of years, inter- interest rates have been very low. Rates remain low but have started to increase in the last quarter of two thousand and twenty one. Recently, the city borrowed five point seven million at two point nine one percent for a term of five years. For smaller, smaller loans, the city is borrowing for terms of two to six years at rates between one point one and two point two eight percent. The city has numerous uh, reserves and reserve funds that are consolidated into four categories. Operating reserves, capital reserves, restricted reserves where funding is uh, provided by the municipality. And restricted reserves where funding is provided externally. The purpose of reserves and reserve funds is to address long term uh, funding strategies. And to ensure good financial and cash management for the ongoing stability, a financial sys-. A stability of the corporation. In short, uh, reserves provide uh, flexibility. Uh, to manage the financial needs of the city. As illustrated in this table, the city holds approximately. Sixty four point six million dollars in reserves at the beginning of two thousand and twenty two. Plans to re- uh, to withdraw. Uh, nineteen point eight million and contribute seventeen point eight million to its reserves during the year. A net decrease of two million dollars. For an estimated ending balance of sixty two point five million. Appendix B of the budget book. Uh, provides a detail of contributions to and from reserves planned for two thousand and twenty two. Uh, to manage the reserve and reserve funds to ensure appropriate use and to foster long term planning of city funds. The city maintains a reserve and reserve fund uh, policy. Um, and that policy ensures that annual reporting to council will occur at the same time as the city's financial statements are presented. The annual report is to provide an update on the balance of reserves, how they compare to targeted funding. Uh, levels established in the policy and recommend to council plan to work towards our achieving our targeted balances. As noted, uh, reserves are a critical component of the municipality's long term financial planning. The three charts on this slide provide a comparison of the city's current reserve position to the long term financial plan. From two thousand and twenty two through two thousand and twenty five. The first chart provides a comparison for operating reserves. Operating reserves are established for operational purposes. Typically, uh, carrying balances to fund items that occur that were not planned or budgeted. Operating reserves would include our working reserves, our tax stabilization reserve. Um, our winter control reserve. Operating reserves are trending, uh, currently trending here. Below the targeted long term uh, financial plan balances. This is primarily due to uh, payments required to cover outstanding tax refunds from previous years related to assessment appeals. The city is committed to repay the working reserves over the next several years. A contribution of three hundred thousand dollars is included in the two thousand and twenty one, is included, sorry, in the two thousand and twenty two budget. The middle chart is uh, provides a comparison of the city's capital reserves. Capital reserves are used to accumulate funds over time to replace. Um, and maintain infrastructure and to purchase capital assets, our equipment, vehicles, machinery, et cetera. Capital reserves would include the equipment and vehicle reserves, building reserves, our land ambulance reserve, waste management capital reserve and. Uh, the land uh, reserve and also our road infrastructure reserve. Over the next four years, uh, capital reserves are below the balance projected in the long term financial plan. The city borrowed two million dollars from the land reserve to purchase uh, land in the business park. When the land is sold, uh, the proceeds will be contributed back to this reserve and the balance will be in line with the uh, long term financial plan. The city continues to make contributions to its uh, equipment and vehicles reserve for the replacement of the city's fleet. Uh, for city buildings, departments pay a rent to city facilities department. Uh, to maintain all of our city buildings. This rent supports the day to day expenditures with a contribution to reserve for future capital repair and replacement. This uh, is the first year that the Glenstirdun Lodge will contribute to the building reserve at a contribution of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. These funds are in turn being used in the two thousand and twenty two budget for building requirements and kitchen and laundry equipment. Currently only the transit building uh, does not contribute to the building reserve. The capital levy of seven hundred and twenty thousand five hundred budgeted at one percent of uh, previous years. Tax levy is contributed to the road infrastructure reserve to uh, support our infrastructure capital improvement needs. The chart on the right is um. It provides a comparison for restricted reserves. Restricted reserves are for identified purposes and are funded from specific. Revenue sources such as our building surplus reserve, the brownfields reserve, our landfill closure post closure reserve fund. W S I B, our parking reserve, et cetera. Restricted reserves uh, may have varying targeted balances depending on programs and initiatives. Though the long term financial plan. Though we're currently above the long term financial plan balances. Uh, restricted reserves are below the city's targeted balances. In our reserve fund policy. Property assessments um, are updated every four years or were updated every four years uh, by M P A. The two thousand and sixteen reassessment set the property values uh, for two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty. A property tax years. The year two thousand and twenty was the final year of this four year phase in cycle. In response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Ontario government has indicated that property assessments for two thousand and twenty two. Like uh, the two thousand and twenty one tax year will continue to be based on a fully phased in. January first, two thousand and sixteen current value. Over the last few years, the city has seen property assessment decreases in both the multi residential and commercial property classes. Changes in assessment will shift. Uh, the tax burden between classes. In two thousand and twenty two, the city is not seeing substantial uh, shifts in property taxes between its classes. This chart compares the twenty twenty two assessment to the twenty twenty one assessment by property class. The city's assessment changed by thirty seven point one million. Uh the city is seeing a four point eight million a dollar assessment reduction. And a forty one point nine million assessment growth on its two thousand and twenty two tax roll. The reduction of four point eight million of assessment stems from changes in property valuations through minutes of settlement. Also, we've had two properties uh move to the exempt class based on service clubs purchasing the properties. And one multi residential property increased in value through a property verification process. Added to the twenty twenty tax roll, uh the uh forty one point nine million in assessment growth. Related uh to twenty eight point three million in the residential class for new developments in various neighborhoods. Sixty six uh six hundred and sixty one thousand in multi residential class for a new build on Pitt Street North. The first property added to the city's role under the new multi residential class. Assessment in the commercial class increased by eleven point two million. This includes development at the Walmart Plaza Home Hardware and at the Independent Grocery uh Plaza. The industrial class increased by one point four million. This is related to a build in the city's uh business park. This chart uh provides a breakdown of taxes by property class based on the change in property assessments. The residential class. Uh is the city's largest class. In twenty twenty two, the city will collect forty four point four million dollars in taxes from the residential class. An increase of one point eight million. The city collects uh five point seven million from multi residential class. In two thousand and eighteen pursuant to Ontario Regulation sixty five seventeen, the city has been decreasing its multi residential ratio. Oreg sixty five seventeen prescribes a maximum ratio uh threshold of two point oh. For the multi residential property class. Municipalities with a ratio set higher than two point oh are subject to a full levy restriction. And cannot increase uh their current multi residential class ra- ratio. Since two thousand and eighteen, the city has been applying this restriction. In twenty twenty one, the city's ratio for multi residential class did drop between uh below two point oh to one point nine nine one seven oh six. In order to uh further reduce the race, the ratio, administration is recommending. That the city continues to freeze the municipal portion of the multi residential tax rate. Uh using this strategy, the multi residential uh ratio will continue to decrease, supporting council strategic initiative for affordable housing. The result is that the tax increases or any reassessment uh related to tax shifts are prevented in the multi residential class. Any tax increases would have, that would otherwise have been applied to the multi residential class or redistributed to other classes. As noted, uh the city now has one new build in this class and once complete. Uh both um social hous- housing builds, the one on ninth and the one uh. That will be constructed on Pitt Street North will also be added to this tax class. The city levies taxes for properties in the new multi resinal residential class at the same rate as the residential class. The commercial class. Um is the city's second largest class. In twenty twenty two, the city will collect. Twenty six point eight million dollars in taxes from the commercial class, an increase of one point one million. The city collects three point four million from the industrial class, an increase of a hundred and five thousand dollars. The chart at the bottom of the slide estimates that the twenty twenty two municipal taxes for the average residential home assessed at. One hundred and seventy six thousand nine hundred and seven dollars, excuse me, would be. Uh two hu- two thousand seven hundred and seventy six dollars ninety three cents, an average increase of eighty five dollars ninety one cents or three point. One nine percent when compared to twenty twenty one. As noted, in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Ontario government will hold the twenty twenty two assessment at the fully phased in January first twenty twenty six. Twenty sixteen values. Changes to the assessment role will include new growth. Um and development from the twenty twenty one year and any renovations made to current properties discounted to the twenty sixteen values. It will also include changes in assessment related to minutes of settlement and property reclassifications. Of the city's sixteen thousand one hundred and four residential properties. Ninety four point nine percent or fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty four properties did not have a change. Uh in its assessment. One hundred and fifty three new properties, residential properties were added to the twenty twenty two tax roll and. Um eight hundred and twenty residential properties had an assessment increase. To existing properties as a result of renovations and building additions. This chart uh provides detail by property type for those fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty four residential properties with no assessment change. The city has ten thousand one hundred and twenty. Uh single family homes representing sixty six point two percent of the portfolio. The average assessment year to year remains unchanged at uh one hundred and seventy eight three. So uh three hundred and seventy six, based on the twenty twenty two budget, the average taxes for this group would increase by. Uh eighty six dollars and sixty two cents or three, three point one nine percent. The same information is provided for the varying residential uh types, single family did. The single family detached and semi detached homes represent seventy one point, sorry, sixty one. Represents uh seventy six point one percent of the portfolio of residential properties. The estimated increase in taxes is between eighty two and eighty seven dollars. Based on uh these uh fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty four properties, the average municipal tax increase. Would be eighty five dollars ninety one cents or three point one nine percent. The city supports uh many organizations who provide programs or services to our community. Funding support for community partners, our local initiatives. Where agreements or memorandums of understanding are in place. This chart provides pass approved budgets for community partners and the twenty twenty two budget submission. The uh library's twenty twenty two operating budget submission increased by forty four thousand three hundred. And forty seven dollars or two percent when compared to twenty twenty one. The gross capital budget increased by seventeen thousand four hundred or thirteen point twelve percent. In twenty twenty two, the capital requirement for the library will be funded through the municipal building reserve. The total budget submission decreased by eighty eight thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars or three point seven six percent. The library's budget is detailed on page one eighty six of the budget book. Funding from uh the municipality for the Eastern Ontario Health Unit and Reason Region Conservation Authority is regulated through the province. The twenty twenty two budget for the Cornwall Regional Airport is included at one hundred and ten, one hundred and twenty six dollars. And uh the budget uh for the um Historical Society. Uh included in uh twenty twenty two at one hundred and fifty one three oh nine. The twenty twenty two budget continues to pour, support Eastern Ontario Regional Networks Broadband Internet Access Project and Cell Gap. And Capacity Project. The city has committed fifty four thousand dollars to uh to the year uh twenty twenty six. During the uh twenty twenty one budget meetings. Uh council approved to support the Eastern Ontario Agri Food Network in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars per year. Uh from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three, subject to an annual presentation and financial report to council. Funding for twenty twenty two has also been included in the budget, twenty five thousand. The municipal grants uh program. Uh offers a number of funding opportunities uh for each year. Um for the purpose of starting and or supporting community based initiatives such as events and projects, festivals, festivals and programs. The Municipal Grants Review Committee finalized its review of the twenty twenty two applications. The annual budget set aside for this program per year. Uh based on policy is two hundred thousand dollars. This would be a hundred and twenty three thousand four hundred and twenty six plus the twenty twenty one carry forward of seventy six thousand five hundred and fifty four dollars. And our uh final slide. Uh this is a pie chart uh we use to provide a visual of what services and programs are funded for by property tax dollars. The average home assessed at one hundred and seventy six nine oh seven, paying municipal taxes of just under. Two thousand seven hundred and seventy seven dollars is contributing uh to these services. Um police services at six hundred and sixty seven, fire services at three hundred and thirty three, recreation services. Uh and facilities at three eleven, social and family services at two hundred and seventy four, corporate services at two forty six. Our road uh repair and snow clearing at two hundred and ten. Infrastructure planning and municipal works at one eighty eight. Transit services at a hundred and thirty five, paramedic services at one hundred and thirteen, environmental services. Eleven hun- uh one hundred and eleven dollars. The library seventy six dollars, city partners sixty two dollars and planning and economic development at fifty two dollars. Taxes uh taxes levied to the uh. To the community. And through you, Mr. Mayor, that is the present, the overview presentation for the twenty twenty two budget. Sorry, uh I can't hear you, Mr. Mayor.
I said, thank you, Tracy. You can take a breath now.
Thank you.
Any questions from council at this time? Councilor Towndale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Ms. Bailey, thank you for your presentation. I had a question. I'm sorry to go back a bit. On slide eleven, it looks like it's page fourteen though in our overall uh uh agenda. Um I noticed for the, for the budget submission this year, uh for development charges, it's listed at zero. Versus last year, for example, was at one point seven million. So are we not anticipating any development charges this year? Or can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
I, in twenty twenty two, we do not have any capital projects that are considered growth related projects. It doesn't mean that we won't be collecting development charges. We're just not starting any projects this year. We may be continuing projects from previous years. And uh there may be, of course, uh projects uh going into twenty three, twenty four, but not in twenty twenty two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh Councilor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh I apologize if this question's answered somewhere later in the presentation, Tracy, but. With regard to page thirteen, the Glenstirdan Lodge uh. Complement of twelve additional persons to um. To bring the um the care provided at the lodge up to the standards required by the province. Now. Um is this going to be a target of twelve people hired this year or twelve people between now and twenty twenty five? Which is the um the date that uh this objective is meant to um to reach.
It will be twelve people hired this year, but I'll leave. Uh I see Mr. Golden has uh. Has come onto the screen to further to your question.
Good, thanks.
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh so it's twelve employees that will be hired this year based on the funding that is being uh received, the one point one million. That we're currently receiving from the ministry.
Okay, so can we anticipate something like this happening every year between now and twenty twenty five? Or does this bring us up to the four hours of care a day?
Uh through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh so we are not uh yet uh through the three uh four hours of care per day. Uh so there's more funding that will be uh flowing through till twenty twenty five. At this time, I will, I'm not able to comment on how many additional staff, but we are roughly at three point six. Uh hours of resident care per day at this time.
Excellent, thank you.
Well.
Any other, uh yes, uh Councilor Hinesworth.
Thank you, Your Worship. I wasn't sure if you could see me or not. Um Tracy, on page ten of your slide. Uh display, uh Recreation Services, Alter- Arts and Culture Coordinator. Have we hired this person or we're going to hire this person?
We are going to hire that, this person. Later, later in twenty twenty two.
Right, uh and just out of curiosity, and and I don't know if the H R manager, if Jeff wants to weigh in on this. Uh what exactly is that person's role? I mean, when we say oversee the operation. Are they running the art center now? Is that, that, so this person's job is specifically to book people and and run it or? Or is it to oversee the construction? Like, what exactly is this person doing?
I'll ask Mr. Fathrup or uh Mr. Wallo.
Yeah, whoever wants to give it the old college try.
Yeah, um. You can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, um. That uh position is is not well defined at this time, but certainly we believe that it's uh the person who is primarily. Responsible for operating and running the day to day uh facility. So uh we don't have the details. Uh the, the salary is is uh put in place based on what we think. Uh the responsibilities will be, uh but it is predominantly for the art center. But of course, we're, we, you know, having, we're having conversations, of course, on. Uh, you know, looking at all of our arts and culture uh facilities and and seeing what is necessary, but. What is identified in the budget there is really uh predominantly for the person who will operate and manage the uh. The day to day operations for the art center.
So do we have any kind of idea how much we're going to be paying this person an approximate value based on the grid or? We don't know yet that we've just put something like there's something in the budget that represents their wage. Do we know how much we've put into the budget?
Uh yes, I, I can answer that question. So we plan to hire that position later in the year, probably October. So we've put in about twenty thousand dollars. I think it's, we have twenty one thousand six hundred dollars uh in the budget. For twenty twenty two. And of course, the budget for twenty twenty three would would include a full year salary.
That's about eighty thousand dollars, give or take.
For your, for salary and benefits.
Okay, uh the second link, thanks, Mark. Uh the second thing on page twenty five of your slide. Excuse me, twenty five of your slide, the community partners. Now, technically speaking, and I'm just, because I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. Uh first of all, Eastern Ontario Health Unit and the Region Region Conservation Authority. Are we mandated? Are we legally obliged to give them pretty much whatever they ask? Or do we have some control over that? How does that work?
I have not ever seen a council uh dispute the budget that comes from Eastern Ontario Health Unit or Reason Region Conservation Authority. We are mandated to provide that funding. I, I'm not aware of an avenue to question that.
Interesting. Okay, and the other uh partners, so the airport and the Heritage Cornwall S D N G. Innovation Center, whatever other ones you have listed there, those are discretionary, correct? In other words, we can decide. Tomorrow, don't get excited, everyone. I'm just asking. But we could conceivably say we don't want to pay any of these people any money, period. Is that a fair assessment of the remaining uh groups on that list?
Um, I think there are commitments there that we would have to consider each of those individually.
Those are contract, those are contractual agreements, though, correct?
N- not necessarily, like I will uh note the um. Eastern Ontario Agri Food Network at twenty five thousand, council received their. Uh report earlier this year, their annual report. Uh the expectation is that there will be funding in twenty twenty two and and possibly twenty twenty three. If they can continue with that uh providing that service to our community. Uh so some of these are not under uh. A memorandum of understanding, but there are council initiatives or council approvals that that are in place. That uh and that is why they end up in our, in our budget. If council decides to. If council decides to exclude, um, uh, medical recruitment as an example, uh, before, before we, we do something like that, we would want to hear from Mr. Wallo's office to say what that means in our initiatives in that area.
Okay, so just that, but don't, don't panic, Tracy, I'm not looking to chop anything. All I'm trying to determine is that council has the prerogative for the remaining groups to say we don't want to fund them if the majority of council said we don't want to, we're not legally obliged to fund the historical society. We're not legally obliged to fund the agri-food network at the end of their term. We're not legally obliged to fund medical recruitment. That's all I'm trying to determine, correct?
It's not mandatory.
Correct. Whereas the first three, the li- while even the library, technically speaking, now, of course, if we said we're not going to fund the library, the chances are we're saying we're closing the library, but council still has, when it's prerogative to say, oh, we don't want to do that if we choose, and I get a level of service gets influenced by that, but all I'm saying is those things are open to discussion if council chose to correct.
They're open to discussion, uh, the library presents its budget much like our city departments do, so that council can see what its operations looks, looks like.
Fair enough. Uh, the last question on, back to paramedic service, I know, and I, I'm just trying to make sure I know exactly what I'm talking about. Uh, on page ten, back to your staffing, those thirteen FTEs, are we legally doing that or because of some contractual agreement with the counties? Or is it just, and I think I, like I said, I think I know the answer, but I'm just trying to make sure. Is that like a contractual agreement we have with our neighbors? Or is that just, we just feel we need to hire these people because we're not keeping up?
So there's two things happening in paramedic services and, uh, Chief Lister, it may want to
Sure.
come online. And so, uh, Chief Lister, I'll, I'll leave it to you to talk about your, your, your regular service and your paramedicine program.
Hello, um, thank you for the question. So they, there's a division between, uh, community paramedics and, uh, nine-one-one medics. Um, and the community paramedics are funded at a hundred percent, so the province is asking us to provide a program and they'll, they'll fund that. Uh, by a hundred percent. The other, uh, that's approximately five of those thirteen people. The remainder is to keep up and, uh, there's no obligation to do it. This is a direct reflection on service level and how quick do you want an ambulance to arrive and, uh, volume per medic? Uh, the counties have seen the presentation and, and they are asking for, um, better response times. So that's a bit of, that's a reflection of what, what that is. Uh, we aren't keeping up, it's a slow, uh, degradation of, uh, response time.
Good, uh, I think that was kind of what I suspected all along, but I just thought I wanted to make sure. Uh, the one last point, uh, on to make kind of is that in your budget submission, Tracy, you suggest that we haven't increased any levels of service, and I would suggest that that's not entirely true in the sense that clearly we are increasing our level of service with paramedics. I think it's safe to say we are increasing our level of service at Glen Stort on Lodge. And while ethically maybe we should do that, to say that we haven't changed our level of service, well, that's not really completely true, uh, and I don't know, and I, I don't for a second think you're trying to mislead anyone, but I, I think that the public should realize that yes, there is a level of service that is increasing in some departments. Just thought I'd clarify that.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Councilor Hollingsworth.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship.
Councilor Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Tracy, um, you know, my concern has been the amount of debt. Um, concern of quite a few people that I speak to on the street. Uh, one of the issues that I had was the, um, the, uh, water meters, and I don't think it's needed, however, that's my opinion, and if I can change that at some point, I will. Um, question I have in, in, in our debt, we talked about the water meters, you talked about, uh, the arts center and the new fire hall. But what about the forty million dollar new water intake that we're looking at, and how long is, is it going to be before we have to put that into our debt? And at the end of the day, what bothers me most is when we're looking at one point seven seven four million dollars and including, uh, uh, our, uh, our taxes, that, that's the taxes on our taxpayer, and if we include, increase uh, our debt, it's going to be up to a point where we won't, our taxpayers will not be able to afford to pay taxes because it's going to be so bloody high that, uh, a lot of people in middle class will not be able to afford it. Um, but the forty million dollars, uh, for the new water intake, can you give me an estimate as when that's going to happen and if that's not on? The other thing that bothers me is I see the province telling us that we can borrow a ton of money. They're in debt up to their ears, yeah, I don't know how the heck they're on it, are going to get out of it. And I don't want that to happen to this, to this city. Um, comment, uh, for Mr. Hollingsworth, Eastern Ontario Health Unit used to present its budget to the city council.
Through the chair, through the chair.
Through the chair, you know, I started it through the chair, but yeah. Um, our budgets are audited and it's a public, um, public document that you can see anytime you want. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, further to Councilor Gardner's questions. Uh, the city currently, uh, has a self-imposed debt limit of ten percent of own source revenue, which means that the city can borrow debt up to a hundred, almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and have annual payments of twelve point nine or thirteen million dollars. And it would still be acceptable, I'm going to say, uh, based on, uh, the policy that we've put in place. The Ontario Regulation four oh three, uh, oh two allows the city to borrow much, much more than that. So as far as sustainability of a, of a municipality, a long-term borrowing is very, very important for municipalities to take on those much, much larger projects. So we are continuing to look at our capital projects and try to only finance those that are over two point five million dollars. But right now, we're still well within our own debt limits, we're at fifty-three percent. Uh, we are at twenty-one percent of what the province allows us to, to be indebted for. Um, and what we've included in the, uh, chart that you would have seen on page, page, uh, sixteen of the slides, page nineteen in your agenda is, um, everything in our ten-year capital plan. So our ten-year capital plan includes, uh, the rest of the municipal works yard project. It includes the fire station, the art center, um, three vehicles that fire will be, will be purchasing. It includes Marlowe and Vincent Massey, uh, the rest of Brookdale, the rest of LeMay Construction. Everything that's in our ten-year capital plan that, uh, that will more than likely be financed if it, if we don't receive, uh, provincial or federal funding for is included in, uh, our long-term debt repayment schedule. The only thing that is not is the raw water intake. There's not enough information yet to understand exactly when that will happen and how much that will cost the municipality. So I understand that the, uh, Infrastructure Municipal Works, uh, Department is doing a little bit more work, uh, on on that, and I see Mr. DeWitt has come on, so he might want to talk a little bit to that. But what we've included in our long-term debt schedule is everything that is known.
Yes, thank you very much for that. I did go through the report, Mr. Mayor, I did go through the report. I know what you're saying and I respect what you're putting in the report. At the end of the day, I, I'm still concerned for our taxpayers, uh, being able to foot the bill at the end of the day, that's what they're the ones that are footing most of the bill and that's my concern. Thank you.
Mr. DeWitt, do you have, uh, something to add?
Um, just to comment on, uh, the, uh, the secondary of water, raw water intake, uh, station, uh, pump station that, um, uh, Councilor Garter referred to, um, the EA plan at this time outlines a timeframe of approximately ten years. We're hoping that we can shorten that period through, uh, funding from, uh, federal and provincial, um, sources. Uh, for this year, we've got in our capital budget through the water and sewer, uh, budget that was approved by council uh, to do some preliminary work on the preferred site. And once we have that information, we'll be, uh, moving forward and hopefully, um, in, in the next year or two, um, you know, commissioning a, a, a consulting firm to do, uh, the engineering work and, and try to, um, pin down better, costing associated with this, uh, project. So that's all we can tell you at this point in time.
Thank you very much for that answer, and I appreciate that, but it's still going to be a debt down the road. So as, as our graph starts to grow and come down again, in eight years or seven years from now, whatever the timeframe is, when this project comes about, it's going to add to the debt and I can't see that graph dropping. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, any other questions? Councilor McIntosh?
Yeah, couple of things. The, some of the questions I had have been approached, um, going back to the question, Councilor Hollingsworth asked about the, uh, Arts and Culture Coordinator and, uh, the person's going to be hired in October to oversee the operation of the art center. What's the timeline for the art center to open?
Uh, Mr. Boilow or Mr. Fathrop? I, I do understand that there's a lot of pre-planning for an arts coordinator.
Yeah, I think I'll, uh, I'll, uh, let, uh, Mr. Fathrop explain the tendering process and the expected construction.
Thank you, um, the, the schedule for our, our project is, uh, we're right about, we're, we're preparing to issue the tender um, as we speak, we're expecting for it to go out to contractors to bid, um, by the end of the week. Um, and that'll set us up to have a price to bring to council, um, in, uh, at the meeting in March. Now, we're, at the moment, we're anticipating a, a fourteen-month construction period, which would put the completion of the project in, I'll say, the spring or summer of, of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, that, but again, that's ear- early at this stage, but, uh, that, that's what the forecast is for now. The plan was to ha- have this, uh, coordinator, um, uh, hired in advance of that opening so that they can prepare the, uh, the programming for the facilities, so that when it does open, it's, it's the facilities, uh, ready to run and, uh, programs are in place and ready to be offered.
I, I, I just find that a long time to be planning, uh, hope this person doesn't turn into a Maytag sales or the Maytag person. But anyway, you guys know this better than I do. Um, the other thing too is that just an observation, uh, Tracy, you talked about, um, our, uh, debt and, yeah, um, uh, the increase in the cost of servicing our debt and the increase in the there's increase, and like to call it adjustment, but it's an increase, two hundred and forty-two thousand, last budget, if it hadn't been for the increase in the debt and the insurance increases, I think it was a point eight nine increase, my memory right?
Very close, I'm sorry, I, I don't remember it exactly, but in the two thousand and twenty-one budget, we were seeing the same thing that debt and insurance, uh, premiums had an impact on the operating budget. Uh, so I, I don't recall for two thousand and twenty-one exactly what the operating budget would have increased if, uh, debt and insurance stayed flat, uh, but in two thousand and twenty-two, excluding those in, in increases, the operating budget would have increased by one point eight three percent.
Yeah, it was point eight nine ahead in front of me, um, the, uh, okay, so, uh, how long is the insurance adjustment going to continue?
That's a, a very good question. Uh, this was, I'm going to say, since I've been, uh, overseeing the insurance department, the most difficult year to renew the, the policies for the city. Um, it, it was incredibly challenging, there are so many insurance companies that are exiting the municipal industry or sector because the risk is there. And so what we see across Canada and across, uh, North America affects our rates. We are challenging some of our deductibles right now, uh, but, uh, it unfortunately, it is what it is, like, uh, the city needs to be insured. And so we rely on our brokers, they do a great job in sourcing, uh, insurance companies for us. Um, I hope that we're not going to see this again in two thousand and twenty-three, but I, I couldn't tell you, I don't know.
We're not, anyways, I talked to a doctor not long ago and he's talked about his insurance rates just going through the roof because somebody with a hang name ends up suing a fourth, or a surgeon and the insurance companies, uh, at the end of the day, everybody has to pay for that. Um, the other thing was, um, the, uh, back to Councilor Gardner's concern about the, uh, increased debt, uh, we also have a landfill too, don't we? Have to look at the possibility, setting aside money, borrowing money to replace the landfill and decommission the current one, has that been put into the projections?
Uh, it hasn't, uh, so those are two very, very big projects that are not in our ten-year forecast, but, uh, the city is, is monitoring and bringing information to council regarding, uh, those two, uh, projects, I guess. Um, so landfill, the city will, will not be able to save, you know, forty, sixty million dollars for the landfill. Uh, we will have to put in initiatives to have that landfill, uh, have a longer life. Uh, or we will have to think of other measures, uh, to, uh, extend, uh, use of that, that site and not close it. Uh, so those are all conversations that we plan to have with councils, uh, through the next, through the next decade, decade.
Yeah, I, I've seen somewhere in that document that there's a proposal to get a license to expand the landfill site. We'll come to that when we come to it. Uh, I guess this would be directed to, through the mayor, to maybe Jeff or Marine, or maybe Tracy. The, uh, increase in salaries and benefits of seven million, well, we'll say we're rounding up at eight million. Is that taken into con- the call, the contract negotiations we have, you know, projecting the increases?
It, uh, it. Yes, that is through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it includes a projected, uh, cost of living increases based on information we've received from the HR department.
Okay, uh, the other question is just an observation, uh, regarding the paramedics, I know when I saw the thirteen uh, point six, uh, full-time, I'm thinking Cornwall, but, uh, as, uh, Bill explained, that the county's people have been pretty, uh, agitated over the response times not up to snuff, especially in Dundas County, L Armstrong has complained that long and loud about that, uh, so I guess, you know, we got to think we're a part of the counties when it comes to this kind of thing, so it's not, all those paramedics aren't going to be based in Cornwall. Just an observation, uh, the one last thing, uh, back to the, uh, uh, the airport, we had budgeted, we're budgeting a hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars.
We are budgeting one hundred and ten, one twenty-six.
Okay, last year we he, we came up with a hundred and three, zero, four, nine. Okay, last year we we came up with a hundred and three zero four nine. Have they asked for, is the commission asked for that one-ten? I gotta be careful where I'm going with this. Well, one-ten, one-two-six, or was that, remember?
Froze, Mac.
To answer, I I think to answer.
That was in last year's budget.
You cut out a little bit, but I think I think I I heard what your question was. We did receive a two thousand twenty-two budget for the airport at a hundred and ten, one twenty-six for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I know what somebody's going to ask me over the next few days if we're if, okay, never mind. I'm not going to go with this one. I'll save it, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Senator Carter, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question to our treasurer is when we talk about funding of various programs. We are creatures of the province in many ways. Have you and I realize that we depend on the on provincial government programs for funding. Have you had any contact or has the province contacted you to suggest to you any changes that might be made? The programs rely on the province for assistance.
We haven't. Everything that you see in the twenty twenty budget is what is known to us. So we know that our OMPF funding is is increasing. We know that our fees with MPAC are staying the same, that there's no no increase there. OW, childcare, social housing. They. We've put budgets in for them for those services based on information that we've received and Ms. Morgan will talk to that when she presents her budget. Mr. Golden and Chief Lister have received information about changes in funding for their areas. We have heard from. I I forget the ministry, but it's for police services about the for the amount that they're going to fund for court services. So everything that we know of as of the the budget book, the production of the budget book has been included for those other revenues from the from the province, we have estimated them. Based on what we've seen before, and we have not put anything in the budget that would put our budget in jeopardy.
And you're not expecting any surprises from the provincial government at this particular point in time?
I I'm not. We we haven't heard, we haven't heard from the province if the city will receive or municipalities will receive any additional funding for COVID-related expenditures or lost revenue. We did receive that for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. But have not heard for twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to go back over the issue of the paramedic services, the thirteen point six full-time equivalents that we're going to hire. If my understanding is this isn't strictly for the to respond to pressure from the counties. Because I understood it to be a part of the hospital avoidance program. That what the province hopes is happening and Mr. Lister can clarify this, is that paramedics will actually deliver in a mobile format, services that would keep people at home rather than in the hospital emergency wards. And so this is obviously a benefit to the city too. It's not just a county pressure. Am I right about that? And and the money is totally funded coming from the province too?
You are correct. The five out of the thirteen would be in that envelope of money. We get funding from three different sources. And this is all community paramedics, which is Cornwall, Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry. It directly affects the ability for or edit directly attempts to address the offload delay for ambulances and long-term care in in hospitals. To move those people safely back into the community and manage them from within their homes. While they wait for long-term care. So it does benefit both sides of the equation in that by managing offload in the hospitals, we have better response times. Because that's one of the major contributors on longer and longer response times is the ability to clear ambulances from hospitals.
And then if if I can have a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor? And I guess this, I'm not sure to whom this would be addressed, probably Ms. Bailey. Because I see, obviously, we're paying for the Benson Center every year. When will this obligation be discharged? When, what year at current expenses each year will we have that progress money freed up for other initiatives? Not that every penny being spent isn't worth it because the Benson Center is a gem in the community. But I am wondering when we'll have the debt discharged.
I'm just pulling out our consolidated financial statements now. And I think it's listed in one of our notes. So the Benson Center. Our our current loan ends in twenty thirty-two, but I believe there's five years left following that, so probably twenty thirty-seven.
Okay, but you said loan there. So I was asking about the progress fund contribution.
Oh, well, the the what, how long will it continue to go towards the Benson Center loan?
To twenty thirty-seven as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Tracy, moving on.
Wonderful. Okay, so I think what, oh, actually, I'll bring up one item before we start our departmental review. If you'll give me one minute to share our screen. So council is familiar with this screen or overhead that we use for the budget process. And we wanted to let council know that based on the borrowing that we did in December. Our three Cornwall Area Housing Corporation loans and the flare and also what our expectation of when our transit buses will be received and when we'll go out to borrow. We believe that we can take some money out of our principal and interest for twenty twenty-two. So that amount is one thirty-four, seven, seven, nine. So we'd like to add that or remove that from the twenty twenty-two budget. What that will do from the original estimated change to the average residential property is it would bring the average taxes to two thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, ninety-four cents, a change of eighty dollars, ninety-two cents or three point zero one percent. So that's one change that we wanted to bring to council's attention. And now we are ready to start review of the budget book if council is ready to do that as well.
Well, thank you, Tracy. We're we're moving in the right direction.
So if we can go to page twenty-nine. And maybe I'll invite, oh, there's Ms. Adams to start us off.
Thank you, Tracy. So through you, Mr. Mayor, I can provide a high-level overview of council's budget for twenty twenty-two. If we want to take a look at page thirty at the very top, when we start to look at salaries and benefits, the budget for council's portion of the budget would include council and the mayor's salaries as well as the salary for the strategic planning coordinator and half of the administrative assistant. So the increases that were planned for twenty twenty-two are indicated there a little over thirty-one thousand dollars. Within services and rent, we have adjusted some of the costs for the memberships that were seen from associations. So those associations are listed on page twenty-nine. And council has been a member of those associations annually. When we get into financial, financial and transfers. What happens in an election year is we take money from reserves to fund the technology that we want to put forward for the new council later in this year. So you'll see that there's a contribution from reserves as well as financial and transfers to pay for that equipment for the incoming council. So that would include tablets, cellular devices, et cetera. And overall, that's the summary for council as a whole. So council's budget is going up by forty, a little over forty-three thousand dollars for twenty twenty-two. If there's any questions? Okay, so perhaps I can move on to the CIO's budget. So if we move on to the following two pages, so on page thirty-two. At the top, we see salaries and benefits. So they're going up by four and a quarter percent. That includes, in that budget, that includes the CIO, half of the administrative assistant, as well as our communications officer. There is a little bit of an increase in services and rent, and that is primarily attributed to a software that we have acquired. It's called Bang the, I I shouldn't say, I don't know if it's software. It's more of a contract that we have with Bang the Table. It's a public engagement survey tool that we've used multiple times. We piloted it in twenty twenty-one. We want to continue to use it. We have used it for multiple projects through our communications officer, as well as we used it for the Harborlands, for one of those public engagement surveys. So that's a tool that we want to try and maintain. And we also have a little bit of money in there for the street level videos. They have been extremely successful this past year. So we'd like to continue with those street level videos. We have planned for six of those videos in twenty twenty-two. And that, in a nutshell, is the CIO's budget. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions? Seen none, moving on.
Good day, Mr. Mayor. I believe I'm off.
Are you clerk services?
We're going to do the clerks and corporate services in one fell swoop. Both Madam Clerk is is with us as well as Mr. Donaghy from an HR standpoint. To give just a high-level summary of kind of as a group where we're looking to go to twenty twenty-two. Obviously, it's an election year, so Ms. Leveque will be quite busy preparing for that. On top of the work that's already been done and prepping for it. Marshall, it will require a lot of marshaling of resources, efforts and energies toward doing that. October seems a long way away, but I would think the clerk would tell us it's a blink of an eye and it would be here already. So so that's a big one. Along, there's a lot of policy work that will go into both the clerk's department and human resources from an updating. Modernizing, you know, determining which ones we need and don't need. So we have quite a bit of effort put towards that for the year. Transitioning, I would, sorry, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to do the clerks first and then move on to HR or do the overview all on its own and then invite?
Well, let's do, we're on the clerk services, so we might as well do that first.
Sure. So with that, I'd invite Minow just to pop on screen there and walk us through a little bit more of the detailed elements for the clerks area.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clark is absolutely right. In a blink of an eye, the elections were here. I always describe it as organizing a big party for thirty-six thousand residents. Preparing for every qualified electorate to come out with contingency plans after contingency plans. And so this year, we're going to be introducing online voting as well as in-person voting, traditional voting for those who who enjoy that. We're trying to catch a different demographic than we have in the past, perhaps getting some of the younger voters to vote. So that's a new endeavor that we're taking on this year. And right after the budgets and we're going to be going into election mode full-fledged. So once the new deputy clerk is is knowledgeable about her job, together, we're going to be looking at all those different aspects of the election. With that, we also plan for the inaugural meeting and the training of the new council coming in. So there's a lot of of work involved there. It's very prescribed. We don't have a lot of leeway on what we can and cannot do. It's very prescribed by the law, so that's where we're heading this year. We do want to update the policy. We have a new policy software program. And we're going to be uploading the policies that we do have in that program and revamping those policies to make them current. Maybe consolidate a few of them. And so that's another big project that we have. And if you will remember, last council, we did clean up the committees that we had. The committees of council, and we want to go further this year and really prepare terms of reference that mirror each other so that it's very consistent in every committee that we have, so that when we do advertise for volunteers to sit on those committees. We're very sure of what we're telling people, how much is involved in getting onto that committee, how much work, how much time, when during the day, what their mandate is. So that's where we're going this year.
Thank you, Minow. Any questions? Okay, Jeff, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we transition over to the HR side of the house, again, there's a lot of policy work. We we need to update, kind of modernize. I think that, you know, there's been a lot of changes in societally that we'd have to take a look at some of our policies you've written and keep them kind of up to date. Using that that idea, we would also look to expand next year our equity, diversity and inclusivity offerings. We are looking at different options for delivering all that. We look to have communities of those or committees of those either of diversity, equity and inclusivity committees start to work their way into the the different areas, have that as a bit of a grassroots approach with the with our employees. We also think that the the EQI would also be a bedrock for our leadership training for next year. As we we think by delivering those items, we'll also be be able to work on the respect elements of of the workplace as well as the empathy part. Or I think both of those things are much more easily referred to as emotional intelligence. So from as a as an employer looking for workforce branding and a leadership element that we would focus on emotional intelligence for that more empathetic and understanding workforce. So with that said, I we have, we will be back into bargaining again with just about all but one of our union partners. So that will begin to take up a large amount of time in in twenty twenty-two as as we go through. And then again, I I think we we spoke of Yeah, I think that would be it from from what I would offer as a as an overview, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, because I reviewed my notes. I apologize.
Questions, Counsel DePauw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Clark, under employee development, what would be the reason for the decrease in it this year?
It would have been, I'd have to see, I'm going to the list. We could have spent the money or we we put it in in different places. We could have spent the money or we, we put it in, in different places. I'm, I'm just trying to find where, where we're looking at, sorry.
That's okay.
To be honest, I, I'll, I'll get back to counsel. I'm not sure exactly what that expenditure is, but I will find out. We've tried to keep it as, as close as we can and, and built it in different ways, but I will get back to you with an answer to what that specific reduction was for.
And my other question under operating expenditures, under service, services and rents, is that where we find the legal fees that we, the city would have as a purchase of service? Through the different legal firms?
Correct.
And is it possible to get a breakdown of that, that line? Instead of just a global number?
In, in when we ask for a breakdown, like what would we be looking for in the breakdown?
Well, if, if finance could tell us what the, what service and rents, what, what is all of that?
Okay.
And so, and we're budgeting for three hundred and seventy eight thousand, eight hundred and forty nine in service and rents, but our twenty twenty actuals were seven hundred and forty six, three fifty two. So that's a big difference.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In twenty twenty, the city saw some arbitrations that we had costs associated with. But at this time, what we'll do is we'll take that offside and prepare that information for, for council.
I appreciate that, Ms. Bailey. Thanks, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The disability wellness coordinator we're, we're hiring to deal with W S A V, the W S I V claims and so forth. How are all those issues handled now?
Uh, the, the position itself would handle some of that, but what it would, the position is intended to do is replace the service we use as a third-party contractor. So right now, we use the third party to an extent, less or so during the pandemic. And, and what we would like to have this person do in that role is begin to handle not only W S I B, which is an element that requires quite a bit of, of time and effort, but as well as our disability programs and other wellness-related activities. So the W S I B would be one element of it, but there would be the other element that is currently being done by that third-party provider. We would no longer have the third-party provider and it would now be an internal resource of, of a medical background, so that it isn't, so we, that we, we have a similar resource that we, we third-party contract to that would just be an in-house resource for, for that kind of work.
Okay, so with eliminating the third party and then bringing this in-house, are we close to parity as far as what this costing is?
Y- yes, I, you, you know what, I, I, I have not done a penny the penny, but it does beget to get pretty close to, to what it is. And I think we'd be able to deliver a better service with it inside than without.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I may be able to provide some clarification on the question about employee development. Uh, that's actually as a result of redistributing some of the salaries across our five envelopes, if you will, here in human resources. Employee development happens to be one of the taglines. Tracy's gonna yell at me for using an incorrect word there, but that's all it is, is a redistribution of salaries.
Thank you, Bruce.
Any other questions? Is that it, Jeff?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on. Financial services.
Uh, so I'll ask Louis Savard to join me on screen. Louis is our new manager of technology and innovation. On page thirty eight is the operating and capital summary for financial services. And in your budget book, you'll see that financial services has increased by six hundred and thirty three thousand dollars or eighteen point five one percent. Financial services can be divided into two different activities, auditing and accounting, which includes our budgeting, purchasing services, the tax department, insurance and risk management and I T T services. So salaries and benefits for financial services increased by a three hundred and fifty two or three hundred and fifty three thousand dollars. There are three new positions in financial services. Two of those were transfer ins from other departments. So we had a transfer in from payroll and, sorry, from H R for payroll and one from Coronary Housing Corporation. And there is one new staff that we've budgeted for. The I T T master plan prioritized the hiring of an I T T infrastructure and security analyst to address capacity needs in the department. This staff will join our infrastructure and security team in supporting and servicing I T's, the city's I T infrastructure. Purchase of goods and services and rents together, you'll see one has gone down and one has gone up. That's because of a reallocation of costs compared to twenty twenty one. And so the net increase of four hundred and fifteen thousand includes a few things, some of which we've already spoken to, fifty five thousand dollars to update the city's long-term financial plan, sixty thousand dollars to update the development charges study. It is, it is due. And that will be funded from the D C revenue. And the balances for technology needs across the corporation. So the, the city, for all city departments, their hardware, software flows through the I T T services, and then it's charged back to them. So in twenty twenty two, we have forty five thousand dollars for a new computer lease, forty thousand dollar increase in contracted services for SharePoint and application support, eighty seven thousand dollars for corporate software, including updates to several of our city software such as City View that is used by, mostly by building services, but by about four other departments as well. Oh, three sixty five diamond, our accounting software, our bids and tenders website. And also, we're purchasing clear risk management software to assist the city in managing its insurance claims. There's also a two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar increase in departmental software licensing fees. And new to the budget is Yardi software at fifty five thousand dollars for Coronary Housing Corporation, fourteen thousand dollars for childcare services software and forty four thousand dollars for D L A N software. D L A N is a emergency management software and that is funded by COVID dollars. You'll notice that we're also budgeting a hundred thousand dollars as a contribution to reserves in the operating budget. The I T T master plan recommended setting up an I T T technology reserve to deliver a better service through supporting or expediting a critical future I T projects. The twenty twenty two contribution to reserves will be used right away in the twenty twenty two capital project. And Louis will talk to that in a minute. Revenue increased by two hundred and thirty eight thousand. This includes thirty one thousand dollars in COVID funding to support our ClearRisk software and also our bids and tenders website that we just spoke to. And our fees and services, you'll see increased by fifty six thousand, six hundred. This includes sixty thousand from our D C revenue to fund our D C study. And we will recover an additional hundred and fifty thousand from city departmental departments for hardware and hardware items and software licensing. And so that is our operating budget. If there's no questions, I'll ask Louis to present the capital project on page forty.
Thank you, thank you, Tracy.
Your worship, clearly you missed me. I had a question. Do you want to wait till we get through the presentation with this, just this, and then we can just hold the question or? No, that's, don't wait, that's fine.
There's more to do, to do with I T, so if I can go back to that, yeah, let's keep going and go ahead, Louis.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you, I referred to page forty in your budget submission book about the sole capital project for financial services under I T T services. As Tracy mentioned, using our newly established reserve, we're going to be looking to upgrade the physical infrastructure that hosts our virtual infrastructure and specifically on our disaster recovery side of things. And to paint a quick background, the city operates two sites, one being an operating site where the day-to-day operations are served out of. That's all of our servers and virtual infrastructure and a disaster recovery site where in case of emergency, we can switch over to disaster recovery and the city's downtime is minimized. The situation we're in is the disaster recovery hardware is outdated and the, the software updates cannot be performed to make the operating and disaster recovery the same. So this project is to upgrade the hardware for the disaster recovery site to ensure that both operating and disaster recovery are the same. And as well include a memory upgrade for both operating and disaster recovery to allow for more virtual environments to be created, which will then reduce reliance on further physical infrastructure and mitigating power usage as well at the same time.
Thank you, Louis. Counselor Hollingsworth and Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, your worship. One quick question, Tracy, and I think this came up in our operating budget review in the spring. But I want to make sure, your department is spread out at various locations in the city, correct?
Oh, we are. So we, the corporate financial services and I T T are at the Civic Complex, but we do have staff that support the Glenstirdan Lodge. So we have a staff member there. And then our staff that support shared services are at the Justice Building.
Okay, now.
Oh, sorry. And our tax department, of course, is at City Hall.
Right. Now, if you had to ballpark, if we were to consolidate your department into one space, would that allow you to be more efficient?
I'm, I don't think that.
Guessing a little bit, but.
I, I don't think that financial services staff need to be in one space. Some of us are back office, some of us support service at a counter. We have technology now that we can you know, speak through teams. And so I think that we don't, we don't need to be all in one location. If the city ever looked at a grander plan for for location of city staff, financial services would participate in that and, and see what, what comes to that end.
You don't have a clear idea as to whether that would improve service or not?
I, I think that we operate very well with the technologies and resources that we have. Like I, I speak through email or a Teams meeting every other day with any of my supervisors or staff. It, it hasn't stopped us from doing that. And even through COVID, the staff that have been located at the same building have not been communicating face-to-face or meeting in boardrooms. We've been doing it over Teams.
No, I, I guess I'm not suggesting you're not doing a good job. I'm just curious as to whether it would be easier to allow you to do a better job, maybe if that's the right word.
A lot of our files are not shared, like the files for social and housing services or our shared services department. They're not required or needed by our corporate financial analysts. Our tax files are not required by our accounting staff. So I think that you know, it's always nice to be shoulder-to-shoulder with the staff that you work with on a day-to-day basis. But oftentimes, that, that's just not feasible.
Okay, thank you, your worship.
Counselor Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two departments that I, I'm going to ask this question of and and I hope I get a good answer or an honest answer for both Mr. Gray and Tracy. At the end of the day, do you have the manpower resources needed in order to, to be efficient? And could you use more manpower? I've heard that some of your people that work for you are feeling overburdened and they'd like to be able to expand programs, but you don't have the manpower to do it. So the question is, could you use more manpower?
I, I think that you could probably ask that question to more than just my area and Mr. Bray's area.
Their area, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely there are peaks and valleys where we have seen a, a lot of work in financial services is at budget time at year end. And where we sort of got a break, we're not getting that break any longer, like we, in the summer where normally you could take a vacation, it's been busy throughout, like we haven't been able to update our policies. It just hasn't hit the top priority number one because of other things that, that we're doing. We also went through a diamond or an accounting implementation that takes a lot out of a team. And we're, we're finalizing that in twenty twenty two. Definitely, the I T T master plan has noted that there's capacity matters in I T T services, which we, we are addressing in the twenty twenty two budget by asking for another resource. What, what we find is that there seems to be more work and oftentimes pushed down by the province where more and more reporting is required. And we have limited staff to, to do that, but it is, it is mandatory. So.
With the other resource person, will you be more comfortable?
Uh, definitely for I T T, we're moving in the right direction. The financial division or the accounting division of financial services, we're still looking at better ways to, to structure ourselves so that we can support one another in those heavier times during the year. But, but we're a busy department.
Yeah, and, and that's why I asked the question. If you need the manpower, you're too important, uh, uh, department that you need to ask for it if you need it. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tracy.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, Counselor Carr.
Yeah, thank you, worship. This question is for Tracy. I meant to ask it when I talked to you last time, but I, I lost a piece of paper I had with the question. When we talk about finance, and we talk about borrowing, and I want to use this as an example, I'm being critical of the, the motion, the efforts you've taken with this particular issue. When we talk about the Benson Center, which is a great facility and continually get comments about how good it works and how lucky you ought to have it. And I agree with you, but could you tell me, when we talk about what the initial cost was for the Benson Center, this deals with borrowing. How much does it cost us so far for that building? What is the actual cost of the Benson Center to date? And how much do we still have to pay? I don't expect an answer right now. If you want to give me that in a few days, that'd be fine.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I would have to provide that to you, to you later.
Yeah, okay, there's no, no rush. Thanks, Tracy. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other questions? Okay, we can either move on or, or break for dinner, or do you want to wait till five thirty? Go ahead, Tracy.
To you, Mr. Mayor. If you wouldn't mind if we could just finish my section before we leave or break for dinner. That's on page forty-three and forty-four, and then we can start with our next section of the book, Shared Services.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. So on page forty-four of your budget book is the operating and capital financial summary for non-departmental. This section holds all the transactional items related to corporate revenue, taxation, OMPF, POA, investment income, et cetera, and all of our financial transfers. So on the bottom of the page, we've provided in detail the financial transfers that will be completed in 2022 or budgeted for 2022 in comparison to 2021. To note again, tax refunds are budgeted at a million dollars, the same as 2021. We have our tax increment grants, property assessment, our charge from MPAK is unchanged. We have our charity rebate programs and our contribution to reserves. We are contributing again $300,000 back to our working reserves to pay off the amount borrowed for our distribution centers. And the city is continuing to make contributions to reserves for a capital levy or life cycle costing for, for our assets. The net change in expenditures is a small decrease of $51,000. Our revenue, which is listed on page forty-three, includes a submission of ninety million, ninety point five million, an increase of 4.8 million. This includes taxation, taxation for property taxes will increase by just under 2.8 million. And like we discussed, this represents a 3.19% increase to the average property now at 3.01 with that small change. It also increases, it, it also includes payments in lieu supplementary taxation and growth. Our payments in lieu of taxation will see a slight increase of just 4,500. Our expected supplementary taxation will increase by 1,230,000 in 2022. And our growth will be budgeted at $298,000. We expect to see an increase in our provincial and federal grants of 167,400. For the most part, this is our increase in OMPF funding of 145,500 and a small increase in POA revenue in 2022 of 21,900. Our fees and service charges and miscellaneous revenue will also increase by just under $296,000. For the most part, this is the $200,000 that we have budgeted to recover from our benefit provider and some increases in investment income and interest on taxes. So if that's the presentation for non-departmental division, if, if there are questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me finish my section.
You're welcome, Tracy. I missed that. Thank you. So you have a, you can have a motion to adjourn until, for half an hour till court six. Counselor Gardner, second by it, Counselor McDonald, all in favor? See you in a half an hour. Thank you.
And Mr. Counselor DePaul's question was, what is it for human resources? So on break, Mr. Clark and I just went over that. So he's going to give you or provide you with that information.
So if I can, Counselor DePaul, so we have $30,000 in training money. There is some smaller, more general amounts for conferences, et cetera. But the big numbers include $30,000 for the training, 227, 500 for grievances, arbitrations, et cetera. We have 20,000 inside of that for ergonomic assessments, a bit of a safety program. Track group represents roughly 35. We do an employee barbecue. Well, when there isn't a pandemic, we try to do an employee barbecue every year as a bit of a recognition. That's also not along with our general employee recognition. That's also that along with our general employee recognition programs and dinners that we do for service and retirees. And then we have about $20,000 in there for cognitive therapists. Because as everybody's aware, mental health is a big deal. And we find that that has been an absolute. It's been a big help, we think, in addressing some needs beyond the services that are traditional in those instances. So we find the cognitive therapists have been a big value add since we've started it. And that would be about it.
All right, so our purchase of service for legal fees, is that, is there a line specific to that?
Yeah. Yes, that's the grievances and arbitrations, and it's 227, 500.
Okay, sorry, just my laptop is glitching, sorry.
That's Zoom world.
And my other question, Mr. Clark, if I, do you, what do we expense as a city for? We do have an employee's assistance program, right? That's offered to our employees?
Yes. So.
Would that be?
Sorry?
Would that be in the numbers that you had provided me?
Um, I believe so. I don't have it listed, but yes, it is here. And along the lines of of Homewood and our EAP program, Counselor, we are looking at a new program for this year. It hasn't just, we're investigating what it, what it may be from, you know, the traditional delivery of an employee assistance program to a more robust and better client centered program. However, that is, it's in its very initial stages of concept as we work with our providers and hopefully being able to to do something more in that way.
And do we know roughly what the cost of the employee assistance program is for the corporation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I could get that number for you, Counselor DePaul. It's budgeted across the corporation, though, because it is a, it is an employee benefit. So it's part of our payroll when we calculate benefits paid for employees. It's, it's not a lot of money, but it, it is budgeted across the corporation.
And is that in the line of salary and benefits, Ms. Bailey?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you both for the quick response. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, I think you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. So we're going to be presenting the budget for the Human Services Department. Joining me this evening are my three managers. I have Mina Malur, who is the manager of Human Services, who oversees Ontario Works, Christine Grease, who is our Children's Services Manager and oversees Children's Services, and Lisa Smith, who is our manager of Housing Services, who oversees Housing Services and Housing Programs within our department. So I'll start first with the Ontario Works Division. It's important to note that the ministry allocation that we receive still remains flat to 2018 levels. There is a new funding formula anticipated for implementation for 2023. And so we have built our 2022 budget based on alignment of our current trends as well as anticipation of what our delivery of services will be for 2023. In terms of our revenue, we do have a bit of a decrease in our revenue, again, only to really reflect the alignment of trend. And we have some staffing and benefits that have been, we've reduced by way of retirements. And we have currently not filled some of our vacancies. But we anticipate with caseload increases. We thought they would materialize in 2021. They did not, but we are starting to see an increase in our caseloads, a significant steady increase in our caseloads so far in 2022. So we anticipate that we will be filling those spaces. We have brought on three new case managers to help with that workload. And we anticipate that we may need to fill in, you know, one or two more positions. However, we hope that caseloads will stabilize in 2022. In terms of services and rents, this is primarily the allocation that is provided to clients, directly to clients. Again, it really is more in line with trend. It really is reflective of our employment services and the fact that come 2023, we will no longer be providing employment service benefits. We will have a service system manager that will overtake, oversee those services in the 2023 year. We also have one time increase to our training costs. This is really to allow us to implement proper training and the necessary training to move us in towards life stabilization, which is the service that we will be providing on an ongoing basis, 2023 and beyond for our Ontario Works Department. As indicated, our caseload increases, we expected them in 2021. They did not materialize till later in 2021, and we are seeing that steady rise in caseloads for 2022 so far. Again, there's an overall decrease to the OW budget of about 17% or $104,000. Again, this is still keeping in line with anticipated caseload increases into 2022. Are there any questions on the Ontario Works budget?
Any questions? Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There may not be a short answer, but I'd love to know how you cope when you currently have a caseload increase with a 17% decrease. It must be a crisis time.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the decrease was the reflection of a decrease of one full-time staff, not at our frontline level. So we have not decreased the staffing at frontline level. And some of the services we have decreased are more on the employment benefits that we provide to clients, which are in line with trend over previous years. And as a result of the fact that come 2023, we will no longer be providing employment services to clients.
So I guess just a brief elaboration, what employment services do you currently offer and who's going to offer them in the future?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we currently provide employment related benefits and some employment service directly through frontline staff. Those services will be provided through a service system agent. The ministry has not yet selected the service system manager within this area. Once that, that was a competitive process, and once that service manager has been announced and selected, we will be working with that service system manager to move employment services to that agency.
So it'll be something like ODSP being a provincial responsibility that is that, that's going to be a provincial.
For you, Mr. Mayor, so it's varying from region to region. It really depends on who is applying to be the service system manager. In other regions, it has varied from employment service agencies, private employment service agencies, colleges, a number of organizations who feel they can deliver the employment services within that specific region. And so our region would be the eastern region. So the service system manager is applying to deliver employment services for all of the eastern region, including Ottawa.
So it may well go to the private sector then to fulfill that function.
That's correct.
And thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I just have one, Melissa, on your, when you look at this, Ontario Work recipients may be eligible for discretionary benefits. How does, how does that work? How do they become eligible?
So in order to become eligible for discretionary benefits, we receive an allocation from the province to administer discretionary benefits. In some cases, we determine which discretionary benefits we will allocate funding for. Clients simply make a request to our office, to their case manager for that discretionary benefit. If it's an eligible expense, because it is a limited or the capacity is capped at what the province provides to us, if it fits within our current policy on what is an approved discretionary benefit, and the client is eligible, then they would receive the funding, or we may pay third-party vendors for the service that they're requesting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Children's Services.
So Children's Services, as Council may remember, the Ministry of Education also implemented a funding formula change in 2021. Twenty, it was a two-year phase-in program. So 2022 is the second year of the two-year funding formula change. As a result, there are some increases to the municipal contribution. But to offset those, despite the funding formula change, overall revenues are up as we have received one-time funding from the ministry for a new initiative, a workforce strategy initiative. It's fairly new, and we've just submitted our plan for approval by the ministry. And in essence, it is to try and create more of a robust workforce for registered education providers or R E C Es, I can never remember the title of that. So it's to increase the pool of eligible or registered early childhood educators. We were seeing a bit of a our childcare providers are seeing staffing issues and getting qualified staff to work. And so this is a new initiative. It's 100% provincially funded. So that is where the increase in our revenues come from for children's services. And overall, our expenses are either in line with trend or they are reflective of the full year closure of a Rishul daycare center. And many of those expenses or revenues have now moved towards our special needs resourcing to amplify the special needs resourcing program that we are now offering. Again, we've had a couple of staffing level decreases, and those are as a result of the RBC closure. Any questions on Children's Services?
Melissa, past managers used to always use the acronym and let us ask the question what that meant.
But we've recently changed a lot of our titles as of January 1st with the merger with Carlin Air Housing Corporation. So I thought it best to really emphasize what, what we're talking about in this budget.
Any questions? Housing Services.
So for Housing Services, as Ms. Bailey indicated earlier in her presentation, this is our first budget post-merger with a former Carlin Area Housing Corporation. So we are now an integrated entity in terms of operations. Our Housing Services Division is now split into two main areas. Housing Programs, Housing Programs is what you traditionally or historically would have known as our budget presentation for housing. And these programs are largely funded by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and they're delivered through Housing Programs Division here at 340 Pitt Street. Housing Services, those are programs that are administered through, sorry, excuse me, Housing Services are the programs administered through Housing Services, which is formerly Carlin Area Housing Corporation. As indicated, our Housing Programs, the major revenue source for that is the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. The biggest decrease that you will notice in revenues for Housing Services is a result of the end of social service relief funding in 2021. As a result of the pandemic, the ministry provided four phases of social service relief funding. And all of those phases have now come to an end or will shortly be coming to an end in all projects. All funding has been allocated to projects. We have yet to hear whether there will be a fifth phase of social service relief funding, but we will certainly welcome it if it comes our way. Overall expenses for housing programs are in line with trend. And they're really reflective of client demand. So this is one of the areas where our expenses often fluctuate year over year. And it really is based on client demand for the program and what the needs of our clients are in this area. In terms of Housing Services, again, this used to be a transfer from our budget to over to Carlin Air Housing Corporation. This year, this is the first year where we have separated out the local housing corporation and the nonprofit into a more holistic budget incorporated with the department. Historically, the service manager, we would have reviewed Carlin Area's budget submission before it was included as the transfer line item into our budget. And Housing Services has built their budget also on, based on trends as well. Revenues from, for Housing Services is primarily from rental revenues from tenants and municipal subsidy as well as for 2022, some contributions from operating reserves for unspent 2021 operating revenue to help with some of the modernization efforts with Housing Services as well. One of the major expenses increased for Housing Services this year is an increase to our rent supplement program. We've done a program review that shows in order to keep up with market averages with rents in the private market, we need to increase funding to preserve our private market agreements with landlords. And we are recommending additional investments over a five-year phase-in approach based on a 20% turnover rate. So that's an additional municipal investment of $261,000. We have said some other fluctuations based on obvious increase to cost of living expenses like utilities and insurance and things like that for the operations of Housing Services. And we have, we are drawing on reserves. So we do have some expense reserves for, as I indicated, modernization efforts, rebranding, and expenses related to the new build on Ninth Street. So while Housing Services looks like it's a decrease in in the budget, there is, it appears to be a decrease, but really it is due to the loss of the Social Service Relief Fund. And the municipality is actually contributing more to Housing Services. They're investing more in Housing Services overall. Before I move on to capital.
Any questions? Counselor Towndale and Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Just a question for you. There's two reserves that are related to social housing. I'm just, I don't know if I've ever asked what the purpose of each one is. So I was wondering if you could provide clarification on the Social Housing Providers Reserve and the Social Housing Capital Reserve Fund and what those are designated for exactly, please?
Absolutely, through you, Mr. Mayor. So there are a couple of housing reserves. One is specifically for the LHC, the Local Housing Corporation, formerly Carlin Area, now Housing Services. And so their operating surpluses at the end of the year go into this operating reserve. Likewise, if they have any capital surpluses at the end of the year goes into a capital reserve. We also have a reserve for all of our housing providers that we contract with. So outside of the LHC, we have several other providers that we contract with. Their operating reserves also come in to this reserve at the end of the year. If there, if there is a need for them to draw on those reserves, we bring those reports to Council to approve the withdrawal of the reserve fund. We also have the Housing Revitalization Reserve Fund or Regeneration Fund, and that is a fund that Council approved a number of years ago. With the end of mortgages being paid, the municipal contribution is now being put into that reserve so that when we have capital projects, new projects, as an example, Ninth Street, we put that, those contributions into that reserve to help build the reserve so that we can increase units in, across Carlin SD&amp;G over the next several years.
Hey, thank you. Can I just, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, just a quick clarification between under restricted reserves, there's Social Housing Capital Equipment Reserve, and then under, and sorry, I should clarify, restricted reserves that are municipally funded, there is a Social Housing Capital and Equipment Reserve. And then under restricted reserves that are funded externally, there's another one, Social Housing Capital Reserve Fund. Could I just get a quick clarification on the difference between those two, please?
Yeah, so I, through you, Mr. Mayor, may I ask Mrs. Bailey to assist with that as well? Again, there's a capital reserve for our local housing corporation, and the external one, I believe, is for the, the other providers that we contract with. But I would ask Mrs. Bailey just to provide some clarification on that as well.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The restricted reserves municipal funded means that the City of Cornwall has put those funds aside for specific purposes. And the Social Housing Capital and Equipment Reserve had to do with a contribution from our affordable housing program. And so excess funds were put into that reserve. I believe the province allowed us to do that in one year to use for those purposes in I believe the province allowed us to do that uh, in one year to use for those purposes in a future year. And uh, then the restricted reserves funded externally is is money's coming to the city to use for specific purposes. Is is that answer your question, Counselor Towndale?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Just about, uh, could you give me an example of one of the purposes for the reserve that's funded externally quickly, if possible?
Uh, so uh, Social Housing Providers Reserve is used uh, for those agencies that uh, uh, Ms. Morgan commented on. So they provide hu- social housing outside of our own portfolios. And so uh, if there is, and they contributed to to that reserve. And uh, if there is a need for them to uh, change a roof or update uh, their units, an application goes to the Social Housing Division as a service manager. And uh, they're approved through an application basis. And that would be the Social Housing Providers Reserve. The Social Housing Capital Reserve, I believe, is Cornwall Area Housing's uh, reserve for their portfolio of uh, housing units.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the addition of one maintenance staff member, is this um, uh, due to new properties coming online? Or or is it replacing an outsourced we were doing?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, that anticipated increase in the maintenance staff is a result of the new build on Ninth Street. Um, it's a fairly significant-sized building uh, as well as the um, proposed uh, construction or development we have on Pitt Street North. Uh, those two units combined will be part of the portfolio of this new maintenance um, staff person.
And when do we plan on bringing this staff person onboard?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, probably not until uh, late in two thousand and twenty-two. The building on Ninth Street is not slated to open uh, to the commer- to the commercial space until December. Uh, so probably in September, we would bring this uh, maintenance person onboard for training and development uh, to prepare for um, taking over uh, some of the the housing portfolio that we have.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Melissa? Housing Services.
Uh, so thank you. Uh, so this is the first time that we've had to present capital. Um, historically, capital has been um, a- another budget that Cornwall and Area Housing Corporation has um, provided to us and it has been a line transfer to them uh, annually. Um, it is important to note that the capital dollars for housing services are mandated by provincial legislation. It was enacted with the provincial devolution of social housing uh, to municipalities in two thousand. Uh, Cornwall not-for-profit housing budgets are set by the provincial funding and legislation associated with not uh, nonprofit social housing. Uh, this same funding has been included in the annual budget since devolution in two thousand. Uh, and although there is an older asset management plan for housing services, there is no ten-year capital forecast um, at this time, but an internal five-year working document, a ten-year uh, capital forecast uh, is expected to be completed at the same time we complete the asset management plans uh, in line with the rest of the city. Uh, so for our capital projects, the um, capital funding that um, housing services receives uh, is one point uh, zero three nine million dollars. Again, that has been the amount since devolution. And uh, we ha- identify a number of projects, capital projects uh, based on a number of factors. One is, you know, age of the capital project, um, health and safety. Uh, we also have to follow resident, the Residential Tenancies Act. Uh, and so as good landlords, maintain those properties for the tenants that that reside there. Uh, on pages fifty-four to uh, fifty uh, sixty-four of the budget book, uh, you will see all of the uh, capital projects that the Housing Services Division um, has earmarked for two thousand and twenty-two. Again, many of them are driven by uh, health and safety, age of unit, um, just general wear and tear um, and Residential Tenancies Act requirements. I'm not sure if you want me to go through each capital project individually or.
I think we've had an opportunity to look at them. Are there any questions? Counselor Hollingsworth and Counselor Towndale.
Okay, so quick question, uh, Ms. Morgan. Uh, essentially, are all of these uh, things we must do legally? So for example, on page fifty-four, we're going to pony up some money for a backup generator. It's going to cost citizens of Cornwall two hundred grand. A pro, I'll just shy of two hundred thousand. We have to do that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So um, although this capital project is uh, it has a a price tag of two hundred and fifty thousand, whether we spent it on this project um, or not, uh, we would have to spend it on something else because we are mandated to provide one point zero three million dollars in capital funding to the local housing corporation on an annual basis for capital projects. So this is a project that the housing services team has determined to be a a priority project. Uh, it does not have emergency backup generator. And so if uh, the power was to go out for a long period of time, uh, we would still be required to provide heat, lights, uh, and the uh, essentials for vital services within our units. And so uh, this would be something deemed to be a priority um, at this point in time for housing services.
Fair enough. So we're on the hook for one point, one million. Cutting this budget is not saving the citizens of Cornwall any money because we're just going to have to go spend it someplace else.
That is correct.
Based on wear and tear of our of our uh, inventory. You guys have determined this is as good a project as anybody. But if we as council said, no, we're not doing that, doesn't matter. You haven't saved anybody any money, we'll just spend it on a walkway instead. Does that sound about right?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
You're welcome.
Counselor Towndale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, through you, uh, two questions, Ms. Morgan. Now, one was kind of spurred by Counselor Hollingsworth. So we have to spend the one million plus dollars. Is it stipulated where the one million has to come from? Does it have to be from the tax base?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, that I don't know. Um, you know, if council chose to take it somewhere else, that's council's prerogative. Uh, but council must approve one point zero three nine million dollars uh, to a, to the capital uh, portion uh, of the local housing corporation.
Okay, thank you. And uh, another question. What's the current funding model percentage with the counties? Because obviously, we're paying the lion's share of these projects. Uh, how is a formula determined?
Uh, so through you, Mr. Mayor, um, I believe that agreement was just recently renewed um, with the counties. Um, I believe the share for housing services is something like seventy-seven point one eight percent to twenty-two point seventy percent. Something, something, I guess, almost a seventy-thirty split, if you will. Um, and it has, that has been um, in effect um, since devolution. It has been reviewed on a regular basis between the city and the counties.
Okay, thank you. Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, follow-up on that. So what, uh, forgive me, I don't remember the process exactly, but what, uh, determines that funding split? Because i- if its population, SDG has more people in Cornwall, is it the size of the budget? What is it exactly?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I see Mrs. Adams has come on screen. Perhaps she will uh, provide some insight into that uh, shared services agreement as a whole.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, for social housing, it's based on where the units are located. So a majority of the housing units uh, are located in the City of Cornwall. And then there are uh, multiple buildings that are throughout SCG. But that funding formula is based on where the units are physically located between the city and the counties.
Yeah, thank you, Madam CEO. Through you, Mr. Chair, just one quick follow-up on that. So it's the, based on the total number of units and where they're located, not each individual uh, project, we'll say?
Yeah, so it would be based on, it's based on the number of um, residential units.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Melissa.
You're very welcome.
Move on to Glenn Storden Lodge.
Good evening, Council. Uh, so tonight, um, I am very pleased that uh, to inform you that that's the ministry will be providing more hours of care to seniors and the lodge across Ontario. So we um, we're going along the right direction of getting four hours of care per day per, uh, per, yes, or hours direct care for resident per day. Um, so as you can see, salary and benefits have increased roughly to one point uh, four million for two thousand and twenty-two, uh, which roughly represents uh, what the um, city, uh, the federal government will be providing us of roughly one point one million. Um, so we will be increasing uh, a additional RNs, RPM, PSW, and support staff uh, to meet those needs, uh, purchase of goods. So we've uh, moved to replacing all toilets in the home to become in the more eco-friendly facility. So although we've changed those toilets halfway through the year, we managed to save roughly twenty-five thousand dollars in water uh, usage, which is offsetting some of the costs of purchases and goods of the lodge. Um, services and rents, as you will notice, um, so there's been a decrease of roughly a hundred and eight thousand dollars. That represents uh, meals on wheels, uh, direct costs. Um, so the previous formula was that we uh, were charging a resident per, um, kind of a labor cost per meal. Um, I changed that formula to actual costs, uh, the residents and the staffing salary. So that's uh, represents a, an amount of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh, financing long-term, the principal and interest, so these costs are related to financing the generator and HVAC system that was improved in the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Um, financial transfers, again, we've uh, as recommended in previous uh, last year's budget, uh, starting a reserve of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that is the um, reflected in this year's budget. And in revenue, as I discussed and Mrs. Bailey brought forward earlier, we are getting new funding from the ministry of one point one million that was guaranteed to us. That started to flow in uh, in November of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and we're expecting to receive more information in April of two thousand and twenty-two of what it would be looking like uh, for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three and so on and so forth. Uh, to ensure that by two thousand and twenty-five, we'll be reaching four hours of care per day. So there's more funding that will be coming down mid to end of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, and outreach program, uh, so that's in there's been a reduction outreach cost due to virtual programming and costs of reduction model on four meals on wheels program. So an additional fif- uh, sixteen thousand dollars has been added to the outreach program to uh, support the senior friendly committee and their efforts to operate the senior own-wheel program for the two thousand and twenty-two season. And that's it.
Any questions? Counselor Towndale and Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Golden. Uh, I had two questions. The first one, uh, so last year, there was talk about GSDL joining the uh, building reserve for the city. I know there's a a note here, my page is ninety-eight, but it's on top of another number. I can't see what page it is. It's your first page. It mentions that there is a reserve fund for capital expenditures. Is this separate then from the uh, building reserve?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there is funding that we are getting from the ministry for uh, capital funding uh, that is applied directly to uh, some of our capital projects as well as a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've uh, we've put forward as a request that oh, for the first year of two thousand and twenty-two has been applied to some of our projects, capital projects for two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, uh, thank you. So is that two fifty kept separate from the building reserve fund?
Uh, through you, Tracy, if you have, would you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it isn't kept uh, separate from the building reserve. We have uh, two building reserves, I believe, one for municipal buildings and one for recreation buildings. So we've included this in the city's uh, building reserve. And so financial services tracks sub-re- sub-reserves within a reserve title. Or we'd end up having, you know, forty, or we probably have forty reserves right now. We'd have a hundred and forty reserves. So on page uh, sixty-seven to uh, Stephen's point, um, you'll see where the funding uh, will come from for uh, his projects. And we are contributing, our first contribution of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that reserve. But we're taking two hundred and fifty-eight, seven hundred out of the reserve because we're one year. Um, uh, Mr. Golden may need funding to support his his building requirements. Another department won't. And so they're sharing that reserve as we, as we move forward through the, through the years.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and through you, Mr. Chair, one question. On the resident equipment project page, sorry, again, my number says one oh one. I think it's something else for everyone else. Uh, under the electric beds, so the costing says fifteen thousand, but it says the beds cost twenty-five hundred each, and then it says ten beds will be purchased. So is the cost of the project twenty-five thousand or is it fifteen thousand and we're buying fewer beds?
Through you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So originally, it's a mistake that I've made. So originally, I was uh, going to put forward a request of twenty-five thousand dollars to change the beds. And uh, through council, uh, well, through deliberations with the um, se- the senior team, I reduced it to fifteen thousand. So the, there's a correction there that needs to be done of twelve, uh, you know, for six, six beds. Instead of.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, uh, to Mr. Golden. Um, it says here under the revenue, you you uh, expect an increase in funding uh, for resident acuity in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, is that in this budget? And if so, how did you come up with the number?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, what, in two thousand and nineteen, um, all the, all the resident um, notes were documented uh, by hand. So we changed into our system of electronic, electronic health uh, record system where uh, point every resident care needs where it's done electronically. So we've noticed that there's been an increase of um, CMI, which is the Case Mix Index. So that's kind of gives us the, sends the information to the ministry to know how much it's, we're going to be expecting from the ministry for funding. Um, so year over year, based on our CMI from two years ago, there's an expectation that, yes, there will be an increase. So we kind of did a two percent increase based on that um, that projection in hopes that we would uh, we would be getting uh, more funding through the ministry.
Okay, so it's been, it's, there's been a steady increase year over year.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more questions? Uh, I just have one. Stephen, uh, the salary and benefits have gone up as a result of having more employees. Uh, now, is this sustainable funding or is it uh, or is it something that uh, is popular today but uh, maybe changed tomorrow?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at this time, it is uh, guaranteed. So of the, a lot, we've been advocating Advantage Ontario and O L T C has been advocating for many, many years to get uh, minimum four hours of resident care per um, per day. Um, they've, there's been a lack of refunding resources in the long-term care. And I think the, now the, with COVID and the uh, commissioner's uh, investigation on open, on COVID nineteen, it opened a lot of eyes and they've invest, get insured to invest the amount of money that is required in the long-term care. Um, and we're gradually happy that uh, this is uh, being done. But uh, to my knowledge today, uh, there's, uh, this is guaranteed funding is.
Guaranteed this year anyway, right?
Well, until, you know, unless, you know, the the different, different government, I don't know. But uh, right now, we, it's guaranteed, the the funding is guaranteed to till two thousand and twenty-five. There's, that is new funding that we, it's added as part of our, our funding kind of policy. Uh, but uh, yeah, I don't, by two thousand and twenty-five, we'll be up to four hours of resident care, pretty.
Thank you, Stephen. Next, uh, paramedic services.
Hello, everybody. Uh, and thank you. Uh, so in the paramedic budget, uh, there's already been some discussion on salary and benefits. Uh, this is to reflect the increasing call volume that has been persistent over uh, forever. Uh, it's, it's growing by about uh, two percent a year. Um, and we have to address the uh, increasing call volume. Also, the length of call is increasing, so the availability of paramedics is decreasing. And uh, to address that, we require uh, significant uh, staffing increases. The other part of that is the community paramedics, which is funded from the province in three different sources, um, which will cover five of the thirteen uh, uh, staffing increases in the salaries and benefits. Purchase of goods, um, w- we are heavily dependent on fuel and we anticipate that the cost of fuel will go up as previously mentioned by uh, Tracy. Um, we anticipate somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars. We anticipate somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollar increase as well as increase in mileage as call volumes go up. Uh, medications are going up and they're scarce, so they're uh the cost of uh that good is uh. Is difficult to nail down, but uh we're anticipating somewhere around forty thousand uh increase in that. Services and rents covers a lot of uh internal training that we have planned. Mostly what we're looking at in this training is. Uh, proactive mental health training for all the paramedics who work. Um, which is the opposite of what uh Jeff does through. His program. So we're trying to prevent the injury. Um, and we use a scale basically green to red. Um, when uh we're trying to keep medics in the green uh mentally healthy through resilience training. Uh, self-check, uh, that type of thing. We've also have some staff turnover, so our senior team uh needs some training. We've brought on two new uh commanders just this week. Uh, so. Costs for uh that type of training is included in that. Um, and uh, there's a need to uh. Increase our uh, our training levels, uh, mostly to do in the C P world, which is uh the move from uh primary care paramedic to advanced care paramedic. Uh, which requires a significant uh investments, which is expensive, but uh well worth it in the long run. Um, so that's um some tuition support on that. Um, revenues, the the province, um, on the nine one one side. Tells us we'll get fifty fifty funding. It's always a little bit of a guess on what their cost of livings will be. We uh budgeted for a two percent. Um, in this budget year, you have to read between the lines a lot of the times to determine what they're determining as cost of living. Um, that's a fairly conservative estimate. We should be fairly close to that. The uh, like I mentioned, the C P funding is uh well over a million dollars, which is about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase in funding in the last a year and a half. Um, and the program is or has overwhelming uptake. Uh, most of that funding is to keep people out of hospital. Our emergency avoidance strategies and uh we're we're rolling along with that quite uh robustly. And the goal of twenty twenty two is to continue with that. Our uh capital is uh to support what we're doing. There's no significant change to our long-term plan. Uh, most of our capital is to replace aging equipment that's on the road. Um, so we traditionally replace ambulances and that will continue in twenty twenty two. Uh, one of the cost-saving measures we're using there is we're going to try and replace an ambulance by removing the worn-out chassis underneath the box. And put the old box on a new chassis. Um, it's a. It's practiced before you need a fair bit of reserve to be able to do that as it takes some time. Um, so we're going to do one of those that that way. It saves uh about fifty thousand dollars. Four new stretchers and three new P R U's. Those are the um, which are just replacing old P R U's, uh, which are the um. The uh, yeah, um. The, I can't, uh, I've lost the word. They have, they look like uh Tahos, um. That run around and uh the beauty of those is uh they don't get tied up in hospitals. So they uh they're great for uh response times and uh three of them. Um, we patched them together. Uh, the bodies were wearing out. Uh, so they're part of our ten-year capital plan and we're replacing those as in twenty twenty two.
Thank you, uh, Bill. Questions, uh, Councilor Gardner?
Yeah, Mr. Lister, um, in days gone by, when you were buying equipment for emergency. Ambulances and parts and uh you, equipment that you use. Uh, we used to uh bulk order uh with other municipalities and that would reduce the price on the equipment. So is that still happening now or is that uh program done where you're individually ordering and paying full price?
There isn't much in the way of bulk ordering across the services. These are fairly customized uh vehicles. Um, some of the medical supplies and so on. Um, there's a stream. It's very, uh, the supply chain is is precarious. It's hard to bulk order right now. Um, we're competing against each other on a lot of items. There's just not enough to go around. Um, so there isn't, so to answer you in one word, it's no, there isn't uh a lot of bulk buying with other services.
And the reason I I ask that is is. Uh, you just said you're competing with other uh departments or other municipalities. At the end of the day, it's the same equipment, right? It's standard equipment that you all use across the board. So why isn't there an effort being made to try and get other municipalities together with our municipality to try and bulk order? So it saves on money.
Um, the effort right now is, and there is uh. Um, cooperation amongst other services, and I can give you an example of that involving Cornwall. Um, the suppliers can't produce enough uh material. So in a specific. To this is uh the P R users, the ambulances. And uh some of the bigger services have reduced their order. So some of the smaller services like Cornwall. Could get something instead of uh, for example, Toronto ordering twenty uh P R users, Tahos are ordering fifteen and allowing Cornwall to get one. Um, so there is cooperation amongst it. Uh, right now, there's just uh, we can't get the supply. To be able to uh do the the bulk order or even consider that kind of thing.
Thank you, Mr. Lister, through you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me the time.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Wayne. Fire Emergency Management Services. Welcome, Jeff.
I knew I was gonna do that. Good evening, Council, Mayor and Council. Uh, with me tonight, I'm uh happy to uh bring along uh Matt Stevenson to um, obviously not one of his first council meetings, but. Uh, you all have already met uh Matt in the past. As well as Leighton um Woods, if Leighton would turn his uh camera on too, we'll see him. Um, as our second deputy and certainly our emergency management coordinator that has moved from. Uh, when we moved the position from um paramedic services over to fire. Um, we have some changes in our uh budget that are uh a little bit uh uh exciting. Um, one, our uh salaries and benefits have uh only gone up about one point five percent this year. Um, in regards to uh some uh. Um, things that was identified last year by Councilor Hollingsworth as a short-term uh gain uh with uh, you know, kind of long-term. Implications as things change down the road. Um, we have uh. Seen a significant uh rollover in our uh house, the number of.
Jeff, you're freezing up. Yes.
He just got disconnected. He's hopping right back on.
Okay. Will just be a second.
I'm back.
Welcome back.
This short break was brought to you by the Cornwall Fire Services. Um, I apologize because I was wondering why Counselor Bennett was still smiling the same way he had been smiling the whole time. Um, then then all of a sudden it did kick me off, so I apologize for the technical glitch. Um, I don't know where I left off, but um. Uh, I was going to start talking about salaries uh and benefits. We are only seeing a one point five percent increase in our salary and benefits. Uh, due to the fact of uh some um retirements and changes in our total workforce. Uh, we have approximately thirty of our staff that are under first class now or uh under um first-class salary. So. Uh, that is reflecting in some uh savings in our overall salaries uh this year. Uh, but as Counselor Hollingsworth alluded to last year, this will be kind of a short-term gain. Uh, as the years go by, those salaries will increase again uh as staff uh go back to. That's correct. Uh, go back to their uh sa- um, back in their classes. Uh, with that opportunity, because our um, because we've reflected only a one point five percent increase there. We took the opportunity to uh enhance some of our purchase of goods, including uh a number of bunker gear sets that needed to be replaced. Um, and uh we are on a track for a two-year um. To get us back on track with a number of our uh bunker gear replacements. Uh, this is the um, the pants and coat that you see firefighters wear. Um, on the what at at uh emergency scenes. There are protective wear. Uh, they are um, they do have a lifespan. Uh, and we try to maintain enough that uh our staff members uh that we can re- uh replace out at least. A shift or more of staff um uh product or or bunker gear at a time. Uh, in case uh a set of gear for um a shift is is damaged or uh contaminated at a scene. Uh, it is also replaced while it's being washed. Uh, so those firefighters still have an ability to respond. Uh, we are in about uh our third year of bunker replacement, bunker gear replacement. Uh, we are replacing approximately thirty sets this year. Um, as in in uh as we uh go through this, this is a constant um cycle uh as well. And we will get to a point where we will have approximately ten to fifteen sets per year that we're replacing on an ongoing basis as an asset management. Um, uh, kind of procedure. Uh, we're also looking at a number of radios or portable radios that are coming to end-of-life uh cycle. And as that uh happens, um, we've had several uh radios cause us problems already. Uh, the issue here is as it uh gets to end of life, they end up uh being less waterproof. Um, and uh they get water into the radio and of course it doesn't function properly. So. Uh, to maintain that, we need to uh start replacing at least mics, batteries and and in some cases the full radio. We are also uh looking to add a uh small personal watercraft rescue vessel. Um, and that is out of our operating funds. It's a minor cost of uh about twenty one thousand dollars. Uh, this will be used uh in conjunction with the large boat that we bought several years ago. Um, and to help to replace the uh inflatable boat that has seen a long uh seen its day. Um, and is uh will be kind of ushered out this year. The advantages that this provides us is with an ability for rapid deployment above the dam, uh above the uh Saunders Dam. Um, as well as an ability to get to extremely shallow areas uh uh in the dam, uh up in the dam area that uh we service. It also has an ability to enter the canal that we don't have an ability with our larger boat because we don't have a ki- kind of a. A ramp area that we can drop that vessel into. Um, uh, the vessel that uh we do have the larger boat that we purchased several years ago. Uh, it will be deployed on the river in Marina Two Hundred this year. Um, uh, for additional training uh opportunities for our staff as well as rapid deployment into the river area where we kind of need it the most. The um, a number of our uh services and rents, of course, our training um uh has gone up. Um, we're seeing it as uh I we predicted last year with the closing of the Ontario Fire College. We've also just recently became aware of the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office has uh implemented or is is about to implement again. The uh pro qualification uh or professional qualifications uh standard that they um or um. Legislation that they have attached to the fire code, requiring fire departments uh to have positions professionally qualified through N F P A. So we will be uh, we've been planning on that or plotting on that uh already with our fire college attendance. However, fire college costs uh and demands have gone up, so we are um working with that. We're also looking at some communication upgrades through I C O technologies, which is our records management system. As well as um, uh, we'll go to uh capital. There's uh the D LAN uh as part of our revenue. You'll see a D LAN uh software. Uh, um, Tracy mentioned that earlier, that that will be paid out of um federal grants. Um, we're anticipating an additional uh O F C grant this year uh as well. Um, from a uh uh capital perspective, uh, we are replacing a pickup truck. Uh, this is a capital replacement. However, we're moving to a larger size pickup truck. To be able to enhance our wildfire capacity. We currently are unable to move water on the pickup trucks we currently have. Because they're undersized. This um will go to a class five medium-duty uh pickup truck. With four-wheel drive and duals on the rear. This will enhance our towing capability of the boat. And our handling ability of the wildland fire equipment and to be able to handle pulling in water or driving in uh an amount of water into wildland. Um, and that is fully funded out of our vehicle reserves. Uh, and the last is the comprehensive risk assessment. We're required uh to do a fire um comprehensive risk assessment uh by twenty twenty four. We thought this would be a good opportunity to get ahead of the curve on this. Um, this does mandatory profiles throughout the city for geographic. Building stock, critical infrastructure, demographics, uh, and so on. Uh, to better understand our risk uh within the community. Uh, again, this is fully funded by our Firemark reserves, uh, reserve funding that we get uh through Firemark. Um, and is uh something that we will have to complete by twenty twenty four anyways. Thank you.
Questions? Now, so Gardner, Councilor McIntosh.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And Jeff, I can hear you through the wall here. When you froze, I can still hear you. At the end of the day, uh, with the Ontario Fire, I. Um, Ontario Fire College closing and the cost going up. Does that give us uh an opening to be able to uh start training at our new uh fire station in in the north end? Or is that completely dropped?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Of course it does. This uh will eventually give us the opportunity to uh register, as I said last year during uh budget. To register a re- um, a regional training center here in Cornwall and provide uh courses to other agencies, to other surrounding departments. Um, it is uh relatively highly regulated by the Fire College. Uh, and uh, so, so. When we say that the Fire College is closed, I want to be clear that it is the brick and mortar, the entity of the actual building and. when we say that the Fire College is closed, I want to be clear that it is the brick and mortar, the entity of the actual building and structures in Gravenhurst that no longer operate. The Fire College as an entity still exists. And provides for the certification and training for fire service across Ontario, but and they do that through online programs now and through running regional training centers. The closest regional training centers to us are Lindhurst and Clarence Rockland. And that we've identified with the Fire Marshal's Office that, or the Fire, with Fire Marshal's Office and the Ontario Fire College, that's too far. It's, it's too much of a distance or too great of a distance. It's on the verge of, of having to provide hotel and food as opposed to driving back and forth the hour to an hour and a half, back and forth for, for staff. That all told does give us the opportunity to register a training center here and provide courses as well.
Well, with the training costs going up, I guess that would probably pay for our training area on the new station. Balance it off so that it wouldn't cost us more money.
It would certainly assist and we'd have to look to some of the best. The, the, the best case scenarios in the province for operating RTCs. The local Lindhurst operation is, is a non-for-profit methodology and it's probably one of the best setups for the, for the methodology for running an RTC. So yes, we would have to look to that and I'm sorry through you, madam or Mr. Mayor.
Well, we could probably end up being the best here. Thanks, Jeff. I really appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, back to you, sir.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's going without saying.
Counselor McIntosh.
Yeah, Jeff, the, I'm trying to get a handle on the college closing. Were recruits going to the college? If you had four recruits, you would have to go off to the college for training.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So Counselor McIntosh, our recruits have not been going to, or the college has not been running or operating recruit training for some time. So primarily, the expectation now is firefighters come from the exterior or from outside with either a college program from the Ontario College Services. Or some other way of getting NFPA firefighter one into firefighter 1001, one and two. And they provide that. Now, we don't, we don't request that upfront. So we take on the load of actually providing that firefighter training here in-house.
Okay, so I know with the police services, a recruit has to pony up 12,500 bucks for three months worth of training. So that doesn't happen at the fire department. You do that in-house training. With, I believe augmented by some online training maybe too.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we do a lot of it with our on-duty crews. We do some of it with the training officer, the DCs get involved as well. And a lot of that training is all done here in-house, including our live fire training.
Okay, with your second deputy, like, just give me the brief job description.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor. Layton Woods is, so we have brought over the emergency management coordinator's position from paramedic services, so that will be the lion's share of his job role this year. And he, as he is revamping the emergency management or the emergency plan, establishing training, training schedule, establishing exercises and managing our annual compliance as well as the public education component there. He will also be taking on the fire prevention division and our public education component for the fire service, which is a fairly good match with the emergency management kind of world as well.
Yeah, I think that was in, I was on the committee with the fire master plan and I think education was one of the key components that they urged us to move ahead on. The, if there was a real, I mean, a big emergency in Cornwall, some major thing. And who would be the key guy? Who would head up all the emergency operation? Ball, please, paramedics, fire? Is Laiton, is Laiton the guy that would be the commander? Or are you?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a very good question. And not to be cagey about it, however, it would have to depend on the actual incident. DC Stevenson is already working on a unified command system as well as a unified command structure within the police, fire and paramedic services that we can work together, depending and depicting the types of incidents that we would see, who would take the lead role? And who would take the management role in that, in, in the, to maintain or to, to deal with the actual emergency or the site? When you say about managing the emergency, Mr. Woods or currently myself, I am the CEMC. Mr. Woods is the, is the secondary. We will soon switch those roles. And he will become the primary community emergency management coordinator. But much as his title depicts as a coordinator, he is to coordinate the emergency working with the senior management team. Ultimately, the CAO is the incident commander for any incident that occurs within the city.
Yeah, when I was back growing up in the other century, they had a thing called the emergency measures organization coordinator. And of course, then those days they talked about nuclear attacks and he had all the plans, what would happen, where people would go, where the shelters would be set up. So I guess it's something similar to that.
Duck and cover training.
Yeah, okay, thanks, chief.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Jeff and Matt and Laiton. Oh, sorry. Counselor Towndale.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief, for your presentation. A couple of questions. First one, so the personal watercraft coming from the operational budget, what's the reasoning for that? I think it's the first time I've seen any sort of vehicle coming from operational rather than capital.
Correct, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, because this is such a low value item, it was best placed in our operating funds to be included as a new equipment purchase. Because it's, it's under $50,000, so we, we put it into our operating funds to have it come out of there. This, the, the vehicle that we're targeting is actually available and ready to go. You know, we'll go through a procurement process to acquire it. And it is, yes, it, it's something that we've brought forward this year because we've seen a shortfall in the, with changing to the large scale vessel that we've, that we've procured in the past. That we have some shortcomings in our response capability, more specifically above the dam, the Moses Springer Dam, Moses Saunders Dam, sorry. That, the, the, the response capability up there is, is far enhanced with a small vessel that we can get in quickly, get off a trailer very quickly and get two rescuers out onto the, to the water. It also enhances our ability to get into shallow water. As you know, a, a propeller driven vessel, and I'm not a boat person by any stretch. But we did run into a problem with our other boat in my first year that I was here that we had to do a repair to the prop and the scag at the bottom of the boat or the bottom of the motor in regards to hitting some shallow areas. When the lake or when the dam is low, it is a very dangerous area for even small vessels to boat on. So this provides us with a device that allows us for two staff members to rapidly deploy specifically above the dam and into the canal area if we need it in the canal for events where we have provided for the dragon boating as well as on the river for the to provide some assistance for the, oh, I'm sorry, the triathlon as well.
Okay, thank you. Other question, so the, the truck you're looking for for wildland fires, are you seeing more of those? Are you getting a lot of calls for wildland fires currently?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we don't get a ton of them, but our firefighting currently kind of counts on us taking a truck, a large truck out onto the wildland interface. The trucks are not built to be wildland or to be on those kind of interfaces. And this, we've already procured, we have a tank and hose deployment system. That is very much like wildfire or sorry, wildland firefighting equipment that you would use in the north. It's very similar to that equipment. It's small, light and fairly easy to use. However, it's, it, when we, when we load it with water, it's, it's heavy. I'm going to turn to DC Stevenson to kind of give you the volumes of that tank and kind of the weight factors.
Thank you, Chief Weaver, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the proposed unit itself, the, it's what we call a skid plate that would fit within the, well, the box of, of the pickup itself. With the current three quarter ton vehicles that we have, when we have the cab with firefighters in it and some hose, the unit itself, we're actually at capacity. So the, the weight of that truck as a three quarter ton is maxed out. We've done several different options in trying to utilize the existing units and still pass our MTO requirements. And unfortunately, there was no way of ensuring that we could meet the, the weight, the weight maximums. By going to this and, and, and certainly we're not talking specifics, but it's, it's just to give you a reference at like, we would say an F650. I know an F represents a Ford and Chevy and there's other and it would have to go through procurement, but just to give you a representation of what that looks like. Those, those vehicles increase the available weight load considerably. So we are able to put 250 gallons of water in the unit that is what we would call the skid plate with the, the motor and firefighting gear in the back of that unit. Hope that answers that question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you again, Jeff and company and moving on. Thank you.
Municipal Works.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Tonight we will go quickly through or hopefully quickly through our infrastructure municipal works. Tonight we'll have Sean O'Brien, a new, a new manager this year to, to go over the municipal works budget. And shortly afterwards, we'll have Mr. Jean-Mercil, who will go through the transit budget. And I will be doing a waste management budget myself and we will tonight not do the infrastructure planning because it's such a large portfolio. I think we'll move that till tomorrow because I think there's going to be quite a bit of questions associated with that. So without any further ado, I'll just pass it on to Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. We'll get right into municipal works. Budget will, municipal works division encompasses four sections. So we have the administration garage, parks and landscaping as well as health and safety and the equipment train. For this year's budget for submission, you'll notice for salaries and benefits, we've got a slight increase of just over five, five and a half percent. And this is mainly due to contractual obligations and incremental salaries as well as we've had some realignment of staff within municipal works, the roads department and facilities. For purchase of goods, it's also a little bit of an increase of just over 5%. And this is the driving factor is, is the rising cost of fuel. You'll see it's a little over 45,000 person good is increased. 35,000 of that is a budget for fuel increases. As Ms. Bailey mentioned prior to that, we have adjusted our fuel consumption pricing from a dollar to a dollar 10 a liter. So that's why there's such an increase in that one. For services and rents, you'll notice it's a decrease of about 1.141% or just under $20,000. And that can be attributed to efficiencies within the municipal garage where some of the, most of our, some of our equipment can now be repaired in-house. And we've been able to reduce some of our funding for contracted services. For municipal works, we have two capital works projects that have been budgeted at 1.1 million dollars. The first one would be the, which is the municipal works and fleet renewal program. And that the funding was 800,000, that's going to be coming out of equipment reserves. The remaining 300,000 is going to be funded through the tax base and that is going to be a project that's used to be the Emerald Ashbore program, but has now been renamed the Tree Canopy Management Program. Would you like me to go into details for each of these two capital projects?
No, I don't think so. I think we've had an opportunity to read them if there's any questions.
Okay.
Counselor Towndale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen. Just a quick question. Generally ask this almost every year. You're looking to buy three very similar vehicles, three passenger vans. Are you going to be tendering those together to try to maximize cost savings?
Yes, we will be. I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McIntosh.
Yeah, John, first of all, thanks for taking care of that issue I called about this afternoon.
You're welcome.
As always, so. The ash board, is that over with or we just renewed it?
It's been renamed the Tree Canopy Management Program. It's, it's to give a more aggressive tree planning strategy throughout the city. So it's, it's, it's an increased preventive maintenance and it's a new inventory management tools to, to review our current canopy, which what we have.
Where are we with the ash for the battle, the stash for, are we winning it or near the end?
It's, it's a topic to be discussed. I can throw some numbers. When we first implemented the program in, in 2014, we did an inventory of our ash tree just for municipal trees. So we had just under 3,900 trees. We just did an extensive evaluation at the end of 2021 and we have just over, we only have 1,607 ash trees remaining on our properties. So in the nine, eight years, we've, we've cut down just under 1,900 trees or had to remove due to the infestation.
Interesting. Okay, thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gardner.
Yeah, Sean. What effect would it have? I know you're, the budget for the tree canopy, $300,000 or yeah. So what effect would it have if we were to reduce that to by, by $100,000?
I would have to speak with our Parks and Landscaping Supervisor and other individuals to evaluate the needs and where we should go.
Could you get an answer back to us through him tomorrow or whenever, when you get?
Yeah, I'll be, should be able to get you some information on that for sure.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. The two vans, multi-purpose passenger vans you're looking to replace. They both say they've reached their end of cycle and are, and are sold. But what's the 2008, one, one, 2012? How is, how are they four years apart and both reaching their end of life at the same time?
So what's happened there and I think was briefly touched upon by Tracy is where whatever vehicles, higher mile, higher mileage vehicles or vehicles that have more reliability or dependability for say our emergency services. They, they will, as you see here, they're getting the newer vehicles, but their vehicles still have a service life availability. So they get distributed within the corporation to other sections where you're not traveling out of the city or lower mileage is required. So they do get redistributed. What you're seeing What you're seeing here is what's actually leaving the corporation. These vehicles have reached the end of their service life.
Okay, so the two thousand twelve vehicle probably has as many kilometers as the two thousand eight then.
I could find out for you exactly, but these vehicles are the ones that have, that have been, are leaving the corporation.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I was just curious. So they're four years apart and both it reached her end of life at the same time. So I mean, I would have to assume then that your answer about the kilometers is probably, probably what it is.
And that would be correct.
Okay, okay. So sold how?
Pardon me?
How are we selling these?
These are being sold.
Selling these vehicles?
These are being sold on gov deals. I know two of these vehicles recently sold for anywheres from three to four thousand dollars a piece each of these units. So traditionally we would sell these off at a very low cost, but as Mr. Bigelow, who's our fleet coordinator, implemented this program. And it's, it's helped the city gain some value in, in the vehicles when, when they're resold.
Very good. Thank you.
Council Hollis.
Thank you, your worship. Just on that line of, of talking with regards to selling them. How do we sell them? Do we just put an ad in the paper, vans for sale? Do we tender them? Does somebody in the corporation say, gee, I sure would love a van? Like, and I'm not joking, like, how do we, how do we dispense of them?
It's, it's through a platform that's, that's called gov, gov deals. I believe Ms. Bailey may be able to provide some additional insight. I just seen her pop on the screen.
Yes, so through the purchasing department, when the city disposes of any assets, it's disposed of through gov deals, which is an auction site. So the department takes some pictures, provides some information, it goes on to this site and anyone technically around the world who has access to the website can purchase that. It goes to the highest bidder. They can bid starting at a certain time, ending at a certain time, as is where it's.
Okay. I'm just curious. Thank you, your worship.
Welcome. No other questions? We'll go to the roads department?
So the roads department can be broken down into two activities. We have summer and winter maintenance. So for operating on your salaries and benefits, you'll notice there's a slight increase of one point nine eight percent. And again, that's due to incremental and contractual obligations as well as some realignment of staff within municipal works, roads and facilities. For purchase of goods, there's actually a slight reduction of just under eleven thousand dollars. There was a, as you can see, there was a sidewalk grinder that was budgeted through a capital project last year and that unit is no longer required. Another year it's not required. So those funds have been removed from the budget. So that's why you'll see there's a decrease of that amount. Under service and rents, there's another slight increase of just under one percent or twenty two thousand dollars. And that increase is mainly due to hired equipment to manage the snow management facility on Virginia Drive. Costs have increased for the equipment to push the snow. It's a dozer that pushes the snow. And the contractors have adjusted their rates to, to reflect the economy, I guess. That's pretty much it for, for roads. It's pretty, pretty flat. As you can see, the increase is a point zero eight, point four one. It's, it's actually got a negative of one point one zero percent operating for this season.
Any questions?
So before we, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before we leave, we have some capital projects in the roads department that Michael Foster will speak about.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So through you, Mr. Mayor, this project, the traffic signal project includes the replacement of two existing signals which will address aging and non-conforming infrastructure. Our older signals require upgrades and need to be updated to meet current standards in order to reduce the risk of failure. We are proposing the intersections of Sydney Street and Eleventh Street and McConnell Avenue and Fourth Street. The signal upgrade on Sydney and Eleventh will be completed in conjunction with our reconstruction project. As well as the signal on McConnell and Fourth will be completed in conjunction with a asphalt resurfacing project we have planned for this year as well. So if there's no questions, so we'll move on to the next project. So our next project is our annual pole replacement program. Which replaces aging streetlight poles, which are structural, structurally deteriorating, posing a potential liability to the city. For twenty twenty two, we are proposing to install six aluminum streetlight poles along Boundary Road between the south on and off ramp at the highway four oh one overpass and S C M way. Despite it currently being a busy corridor, there's currently no street lighting in that section of roadway, which poses a potential safety issue. Additionally, we're placing five existing poles on Second Street West and replacing them with aluminum poles within the concrete medians located adjacent to Brookdale Avenue.
Any questions? Moving on transit services.
So we have Mr. Marcel, Jean Marcel, manager of transit services and he will make the presentation.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, councilors. So I'm going to start off with salaries and benefits. Staffing remains the same. The reason for the increase is because of salary increments and also the increase in benefits. Purchase of goods, diesel fuels budget for a dollar ten per liter for two thousand twenty two compared to a dollar per liter of two thousand twenty one, which increases to nineteen thousand. Transit has decided to lower the fuel volume to two thousand twenty two because we have a newer fleet, which resulted in better fuel consumption overall. Service and rents are the reduction in costs and budgeting amounts are more in line with the actual for plumbing, heating, electrical contracts. Financing principles and interests that relates to municipal portion of capital projects funded by ISUP include projects such as conventional and handy transit buses. This funding streams reflects a partnership between the federal government for forty percent, the provincial government for thirty three point three three and the municipality for twenty six point six seven. Financial and transfers. Completed projects of Cameron's relation two thousand twenty were paid in full borrowed from reserves and this is the balance to be paid back to reserves. Revenues. Gas tax amount received was approximately two, six hundred and eighty thousand for two thousand twenty twenty one. Government used two thousand nineteen numbers to help with a shortfall due to the pandemic. Fair increase budget for May first, two thousand twenty two, one dollar increase for all monthly passes. Also one dollar for all ticket packages and family passes will go up twenty five cents. Last fair increase was in two thousand and nineteen. Any questions?
Questions. Council Gardener.
Okay, I've been asking this question for a number of years now. John, are you looking into down the road, looking at electric buses so we could get away from gasoline? Environmentally, it would be better and the cost of fuel would actually reduce, will be reduced. So are you looking down there?
Yeah, my game plan is for in the next five years after we're done with the hybrids, we're going to go into the electric bus business. And there will be quite a bit of savings for the environment and everything. So I think that's the best game plan. So we're signed up with the government for the next five years with hybrid buses, but after that, I think the next step is electric buses.
Good, because a number of years ago, I would say fifteen to eighteen, I was in Quebec City and that's all they were running were electric buses and it was just awesome. So I've been asking that question for about fifteen, twenty years and I'll keep asking it as, as time goes by. Thank you. Thanks for the answer.
Okay.
Any other questions? So your capital, John.
Do you want me to go through them one by one or?
Well, maybe, maybe just some that you think would be of interest. Otherwise, they're pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on the capital? Council Towndale.
Here, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. My connection's kind of having some issues right now. Thank you, John, for your presentation. Glad to see we're moving to hybrid buses. I think it'll be beneficial. I just had a question on the smaller buses. Are those not available in hybrid or is the cost prohibitive at this time or?
Yeah, there's no company that's making that bus right now for hybrids, but they're all working on it in the near future. So we're going to be watching for the hybrids and the electric buses.
And I'm thinking.
Okay, thank you, John. Infrastructure planning. I guess we're going to move on from that one, right, Bill?
That's, that's great, Mr. Mayor. However, I've just got a message from Michael. Depending on council feels, I, I'm about to do waste management. He just messaged me and said, listen, if they want to go ahead with it, he's ready. So I'll, I'll just go through waste management. And then we'll see what the mood of council is, if that's okay.
We're always in a good mood.
Okay. So waste management. There's an increase in salary and benefits for the portion of, to account for the portion of sustainable project coordinator that we have now. One third of this person's salary is coming out of the waste management with the other two thirds coming from water and wastewater. Other increases represent in incremental and contractual obligations. With regard to purchase of goods, we have an increase of thirty thousand dollars, but that's really just an in and for the purchase of recycling and garbage carts. As you know, the past year, we've implemented in particularly in the ICNI sector, the industrial commercial and institutional sector along the curbside, we can purchase, we've been promoting the purchase of containers for rolling containers for garbage collection and, and recycling. And you'll see a lot of those particularly on the BIAs. A lot of the BIA establishments are, are using, are using those. And they're available to, to residential as well. So what's happening here is these garbage containers are purchased and they're sold. So it's kind of an in and out. We don't lose or gain or lose any money on that. It's just the service we provide. Under service and rents, we have an increase of a hundred and seventy nine thousand, which is attributed to consumer price index costs associated with collection and disposal contracts. That's the way they were established as contracts. They have an annual increase based on consumer, consumer price index. There's also a fifteen thousand dollar, two hundred charge for an internal vehicle that is now charged to the waste, another, an additional vehicle charged to the waste management section. Under finance and transfers, there's an increase of a hundred and nine thousand dollars regard with and with long-term debt charges for the new gas collection flare system that we just put up and commissioned in the past year. There's also contributions to reserves that have been sorry, contribution, concert, contributions to reserves increased by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And supports an increase in a hundred thousand dollars for future closure, post-closure costs. Two hundred thousand dollars for an organics program that we're, we're working on. I'll just give you a little bit of background about the organics program. The provinces coming down with legislation within the next five years that will require municipalities of our size anyways to divert organic waste from, from residential, commercial, institutional establishments. And so there's going to be a requirement for a processing facility. And we've estimated, and, and that's like three years away. We've estimated that that cost is going to be in the order, sorry, two years away in the order of five hundred thousand. So we're putting some money aside for that. And with regard to revenue, we have an increase in revenue for landfill tipping fees on inbound tonnage. Because we're proposing to increase the tipping fee schedules from eighty one to eighty three dollars commencing January one and eighty three dollars to ninety dollars per ton July the first. There's, this is a movement to encourage our ICNI sector to divert more material and recycle more. And so we hope that this will encourage them to, to, to do so. So if there's any questions in regards to the operating.
Any questions? Council McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question, two questions actually. Regarding the organics, a previous manager of solid waste spoke about a year or so ago about us engaging in an energy generation project through the use of our organics. So is that still in the, in the works? Is, is, are you planning to do something like that? Or will the organics be waste rather than a resource?
Absolutely. No, we are still proceeding down that, that path. The idea is to take the organics and, and I'm losing through a co-digestion process with the wastewater plant. And that would generate more gases and hopefully the end product will result in a fertilizer. But either way, there will be a, and we're still working towards that. Either way, there'll still be a, a processing facility required to pre-process the materials. And those materials will need to be pre-processed before we go to the co-digestion route. And/or if we decide to land apply or use it as fertilizer, we're still requiring a, a processing facility that we, the intent, I believe, is going to have that built on property near the landfill site.
Okay, so won't be near the wastewater treatment plant. It'll be, okay. Okay. And then the other question earlier in Ms. Bailey's presentation, we knew that there'd be an addition of a sustainable project coordinator. Now, this is a new person or is it a promotion of somebody within your organization already?
Through you, Mr. Matt, through you, Mr. Mayor, this person is, is working with us now. And she's working on projects to encourage the municipality as a corporation and as well as the, the public to be more sustainable, more green and, you know, generate less greenhouse gases and work towards mitigating climate change.
Right. Well, thank you for that. It's very exciting prospects you're bringing to us here.
Any other questions? You have capital there, Bill?
Sure. Again, I, how, how, how would this council wish to proceed? Would you like me to go through each of these? Or is there? The, the process has been so far that council would just simply ask questions about any one of the projects.
I think we've had this document for a while, so we've had an opportunity to review it. Are there any questions to any of the capital projects? Council McDonald.
Well, I'll, I'll hearken back to something that was said in the last session before our supper break. And that was that we're, we might be applying for an extension to our landfill license. So obviously we must feel that there is sufficient capacity or that's probably dependent on how well we, we reduce our, our solid waste. Am I right about that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. Our goal by increasing by initiatives such as increasing the tipping fee is to, and promoting composting and promoting more recycling. That we would, you know, save landfill space and we'd extend the life of the landfill site. Something that I, that I failed, I recently I had a message from Dave Kuhn, who's our waste management coordinator. He sent me a message that the, for example, with the curbside collection process that we have now, we're finding that we've increased our tonnage of recycling by almost a thousand tons per year. And what I'll do is I will by almost a thousand tons per year. And what I'll do is I will send out that that email to you shortly tonight so that you have an understanding or you can see some of the benefits or some of the benefits we're reaping with the new waste management contract.
More good news. Thank you.
No other questions? Move on to infrastructure planning.
Is this what council prefers that we can, Mr. Fotherup is ready. If you prefer to go ahead.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay.
Page number.
So starting on page one fifteen, Counsel McDonald.
Thank you for flipping around so fast here.
Yeah, so three, Mr. Mayor, the infrastructure division's main functions are to provide engineering services, capital planning, design services and construction and then for the city's linear infrastructure. On our operating side, there have been no changes to the full-time staffing staffing complement from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. The increase in salaries and benefits is related to a redistribution of staff of how staff were charged within the infrastructure municipal works group as well as incremental and contractual obligations. There is a decrease in services and rents as a result of our OSIM inspections, which occurred in twenty twenty one and not in twenty twenty two. Our principal and interest charges have increased due to capital projects that were funded through debt. Those projects were the Marlowe project, a call for replacement on McConnell, LeMay Street extension and our the overpass we rehabbed on Brookdale Avenue. Our department's revenues are primarily derived from design and construction management fees, which are charged to capital projects. There's an increase in revenue related to increasing our design and construction management fees, which was to be consistent with industry standards. We also have an increase in provincial and federal grants, which is related to the use of gas tax to offset some long term debt. So if council has any questions on our operating, we can take them at this time, or if we want to move on to capital, we can do so as well.
Questions and operator. See none, we'll move on, Michael.
So our first capital project is our annual asphalt resurfacing program on various city streets. So the total budget is four million, which is funded using three point nine five of the city's OSIF allocation and forty six thousand from the road infrastructure reserve. Based on MTO pavement design methods as well as the road evaluation experience of city staff is recommended that we follow the following pavement condition rating triggers to select streets for asphalt resurfacing or rehabilitation. So for arterial streets, it's less than seventy, collectors is less than sixty and locals is less than fifty. We also take into consideration traffic volumes, posted speeds, the condition of underground infrastructure, comments we get from municipal works as well as public sentiment when developing our our capital plan for asphalt resurfacing. Our major complete reconstruction projects for this year will occur on Fifth Street from York to Bedford. First, from Marlboro to Lawrence, Race from Water to Marlboro and Walton from Alice to Guy. Some of these projects we spoke about during the water and wastewater budget as the underground component is being funded through the water and wastewater budget. The remainder of the project shown on the map are solely asphalt resurfacing projects where the underground infrastructure is in relatively good condition. And generally, only the top, only the top lift of asphalt needs to be milled off and replaced. One item which I think is important to notice that we did receive a significant increase in our OSIF allocation from last year. In years twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, we were roughly allocated one point one million. However, we just recently received notice of a significant increase in our allocation to three point nine five million plus a five year commitment to that to that allocation.
Any questions on that, bro? Next, Michael.
So our next capital project is the fourth and final phase of the LeMay Street project. So starting this spring, phase three of the project will be built, which will include the reconstruction of LeMay and Thirteenth. From Obane to Sydney, which will include the new roundabout at the Sydney Street intersection. We previously received a funding announcement for phase three of the project through the ICIP program. Phase four of the project includes the the extension of LeMay from the municipal works yard out to McConnell Avenue, which will also include a roundabout at the McConnell Avenue intersection. Phase four of the LeMay Street project was funded over the two years, which began in twenty twenty one. The schedule for phase four is to begin in twenty twenty three, once phase three has been completed. We are proposing that the construction of phase three and four be combined into a single multi-year construction tender to be awarded in twenty twenty two. As doing so, will simplify some coordination requirements and also decrease construction costs through economies of scale.
Any questions? So, Michael, phase four will be at LeMay and McConnell, that's in twenty twenty three, right?
Correct.
Okay. Next.
Yeah, so our next capital project is our annual contribution to the Centertown Water Street and Montreal Road intersections. So this project is included in the twenty twenty two budget for the purpose of establishing funding over a period of years for the installation of brick pavers at crosswalks as Water Street and Montreal Road continues to be resurfaced. In twenty eighteen, we utilized the accumulated funds in this account to fund crosswalks installed at Water Street and Sydney and Water Street and Pitt Street intersections. In twenty twenty two, the city will contribute, continue to contribute to this account in order to fund future crosswalks along Montreal Road and Water Street in accordance with the plan. In twenty twenty three, we do intend on completing some asphalt resurfacing on Montreal Road, which will include sidewalk replacement, lighting improvements, et cetera. In the Lavalage district from Marlboro to St. Felix. As part of that project, interlocked crosswalks will be installed at both the McConnell and Belmont intersections. The funds we accumulate in this account will be put towards, put towards the crosswalks at those locations.
Question. Counsel McDonald.
There are already signals that, for example, the Montreal Road and Water Street intersection. So you're going to have a crosswalk in addition to that? And how is that going to function?
Three, Mr. Mayor, so the signals will remain. It's just the surface works that are going to be replaced. So we'll be, where it's asphalt now, we'll be installing the brick papers.
Okay, thank you. I thought you were actually going to change the mechanism for crossing. Thanks.
Counsel DePallon, do you have your hands up? All right, next, Michael.
So our next project is the Rainbow Crosswalk Project. So council previously directed administration to bring back a report on the implementation of a Rainbow Crosswalk once guidelines have been issued by the MTO and TAC. So TAC has indicated that the report will be completed in twenty twenty two. Administration also received direction to install a permanent thermoplastic crosswalk. So this proposed project is to fund the implementation of of that crosswalk.
Questions? Next, Michael.
So our next project is the Fly Creek Drain at Marlowe Avenue Culvert, which is a CSP arch culvert, which was installed in nineteen eighty. Our OSIM inspections identified that the structure has reached the end of its lifespan and requires replacement due to corrosion and separation in the seams and perforations in the barrel, which means the culvert is starting to fail or is in the process of failing. So this project will include the removal of the existing culvert, installation of a suitably sized CSP culvert or concrete box culvert, which we will confirm through the design process, restoration of the embankments, the roadway and installation of an approved guide rail system. So this project was funded over the course of two years, beginning in twenty twenty one with a total project budget of nine hundred thousand and will be completed in twenty twenty two.
Questions? Moving on, Mike.
So our next capital project is our small diameter cover replacement program, which is funded with a hundred thousand dollars from the road infrastructure reserve. So the city has several locations with small diameter culverts, which are in need of replacement. These culverts are typically located in road corridors that have been constructed to rural road standards with roadside ditches and culverts instead of concrete curves and storm sewers that you would see in an urban section. So these, the replacement of these culverts will occur in various locations throughout the city, which we have listed below.
Questions? Next, Michael.
So our next project is our active transportation sidewalk program. So this year, we are proposing to add a sidewalk on the north side of Race Street from Water to Marlboro as part of our reconstruction project, as well as on Iroquois Drive from St. Felix to Marlowe Avenue, which will connect well with our future work that we have planned on Marlowe Avenue. Another thing to know with our active transportation projects is that there may be some funding programs that come out shortly for active transportation projects. So we're always kind of monitoring any funding program announcements that do come out for other projects as well.
Question.
And lastly, your so sorry, was there a question there, Mayor Grant?
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah. So our last capital project is our bicycle infrastructure active transportation program, which is developed in accordance with our bicycle and pedestrian master plan. So this year, we are proposing to install a new rec pass along Power Dam Drive from Grant Avenue to Saunders Drive, which will connect with the existing rec path to the, which will connect the existing rec path to the new path built as part of the Saunders Drive subdivision. We also have a pathway which we plan on installing on Race Street. As well as our last project is from Pitt Street to Edgar Street, adjacent to the Raisin River and through Cheverie Park, which will connect to Edgar Street. We were planning on painting directional arrows or what is called sherrows on Edgar Street, which will direct cyclists to a future rec path, which is planned to be installed along the Raisin River, connecting to the bicycle lanes on Brookdale Avenue to be built next year and eventually out to Cornwall Center, which would connect cyclists to the South Stormont Trail System as well. So recently, administration did receive notice that the city was successful in receiving some further funding for the Power Dam Drive rec path from the Canada Community Revitalization Fund, which also funded the lighting project in Lamroo Park.
Any comments or questions? Counsel Hollingsworth. You're muted. Go ahead, Counsel Hollingsworth.
Yeah, like I said, I've had some tech problems. You noticed I disappeared for a while. So it's going to be hit and miss. One quick question, Mr. Fotherup. With regards to some of those plans, so the active transportation one, we're using the federal gas tax and for the where am I here? So that one in particular, active transportation, so some of the bike paths, there's a couple of them there. So one on page one twenty five of our budget book and one twenty four of our budget book. So I noticed there's a fair chunk of federal gas tax. If we were to cut that project, say we don't want to do that project, but we'll take that. Can we use that federal gas tax for other projects? And where I'm going with this is anything we're funding through our operating budget. So for example, we talked earlier about how housing, how we have to spend one point one million dollars, whether we like it or not. Does this federal gas tax have to go to a specific project like the bike path? Or can we use it, and maybe Ms. Bailey may want to try this? We cut that project and say, we're going to take that federal gas tax and use it for something else that we're paying like an operating out of the operating budget. Can we do that, Ms. Bailey, or how does that work?
For you, Mr. Mayor, we cannot use federal gas tax money to fund anything in the operating budget. It needs to be capital. It's, it can be applied quite broadly to our capital projects, except for Glenn Sturgeon Lodge. That isn't an eligible capital expenditure under the federal gas tax program. So there is opportunity to, I guess, remove a capital project that's funded by gas stocks and then use that funding on or for another project. I I guess, depending on what you're thinking of, we'd like to to look at that to see what that means for our infrastructure.
Exactly where I'm going with this so that you can kick it around tonight and have some kind of answer. We were just told by the Housing Department, Ms. Morgan mentioned that we have to spend one point one million dollars because we're obliged to by the rules. You have to spend that much money. That's what we're expected to do. And while I'm not necessarily committed to cutting bike paths per se, I do want to know what my options are. And so we have these two projects, the active transportation projects totaling upwards, if you take the two combined, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's a fair chunk of change. Can we, if we chose to, could we say we're not going to do the bike paths anymore this year? And we're going to take that six hundred and forty thousand dollars federal gas tax and use that on some of the housing projects. So for example, we need a backup generator. I can't remember exactly what page it's on. Let me just take a quick, see if I can find it real fast.
Angle side.
Yeah, so we're going to spend some money. So if you look on page fifty four, for example, of our budget book, we are going to spend a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars. It's a capital project, but we're using our tax base to pay for that. But to me, that's still a capital project. If we chose to as a council, can we take that money from the bike path and use it to purchase or fix that backup generator? Moving forward, there's an additional Iroquois renovations or kitchen renovations to the tune of two hundred and sixty thousand, the next page on page fifty five. So those two projects, as an example, come up to three fifty, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Can we use that federal gas tax money for that respective project on page one twenty five and one twenty four? Could we reallocate that funding to those other two projects? Could we reallocate that funding to those other two projects? Because to me, uh, fifty-five and fifty-four are still capital projects. It just so happens we're funding it through our tax base. We're funding them through our tax base, but they're still capital, and we're obliged to spend one point one million dollars on those projects. I guess I just want to know what my options are, Miss Bailey, as to whether I want to pursue that or not.
We haven't used a federal gas tax funding in the past for social housing, so I will look to see if it's eligible under that program. Uh, this is the first time that we are seeing uh specific capital projects for um our formerly Cornell Area Housing Corporation. Uh, it has been in the past always funded through the tax base. Uh, what we have uh through our asset management planning uh for infrastructure, uh, we have planned to fund our sidewalks and bicycle paths, our active transportation through federal gas tax revenue, where we do not have an asset management plan yet uh for our housing portfolio. Uh, so it's not to say that we we can't do that, but it is doing something different than what what we've uh done in the past when we've transferred money directly to Cornell Area Housing Corporation for both our operating and capital requirements. So we will look at at that, and uh we'll have an answer for you at tomorrow's meeting.
That would be spectacular. As I said, it's not, I'm all about trimming and hacking away at bike paths, but I think that I would like to know what my options are before I officially say, yeah, I'm voting in favor of this budget or voting against it either way, if that's okay. Thanks to both you and Mr. Fotherup for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm out.
All right. It's now ten to eight. Oh, sorry, Counsel McDonald.
Thank you. Just a quick comment before we leave sidewalks and bike paths. I want to commend uh Public Works for the wonderful job they're doing of clearing the sidewalks and the bike paths. Our city is so absolutely walkable this winter. Now, I know Mother Nature has been helping somewhat by holding off on the snow, but even when it does snow, the paths are cleared and the sidewalks are cleared almost immediately. So, well done.
Well, if I could elaborate that, uh, Counsel McDonald, we got a a real nice compliment from uh Levilleage area about uh how efficient we've been and how well we've uh maintained that area this winter. So uh it's really nice to hear. Right, Bill?
That is correct.
Okay, it's uh five to eight. Uh, I believe I believe we can uh either adjourn uh for tonight and uh go back at it tomorrow because we're going into planning and development and recreation, so uh I'm at your disposal. I need a motion to uh to adjourn for tonight, if that's the wish. Counsel Carr and Counsel Gardner. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? We'll see you tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, before we go, I just wanted to note that on the agenda, we had scheduled a special council meeting for tomorrow, Wednesday, at two forty-five to issue a tender. That is no longer reta- uh required, so that is coming off the agenda.
Thank you, Minno.
My pleasure.
Okay, have a good night, everyone.